Thank you, Mayor Lynton. So we, uh, we have a development charge bylaw that expires in October of this year. So, uh, we've been working with Watson and Associates to, uh, to prepare a, a development charge background study and bylaw. So today represents the mandatory public meeting that's required under this process. And we'll be looking to bring a bylaw to council at the June meeting. So with that, uh, I'd like to pass things over to Gary Scanlon from Watson and Associates.
Welcome, Gary.
Red. Red means go. Okay, got it now. Rules are a little different here. I'm from Puss Lynch. We do it slightly different, so, so it's a pleasure to be here, uh, before council and, um, and mayor and staff. Um, we've provided to date, uh, two documents that I'll be speaking to. There's, um, a development charge. I have that effect on, I guess, microphones, uh, so I apologize for that. Um, so the, um, local service policies are, uh, are a requirement, um, for the developers to build certain very localized works. We've, uh, gone over the, uh, the local service policy and have sought to, uh, expand it, uh, to make it clearer, uh, in many cases. So there's no surprises for the, uh, development community. Um, Development Charges Act, uh, as I've noted, has been around for a very long time. We're under the nineteen ninety-seven act, which has made, uh, had some minor amendments to it recently. But, uh, the nineteen ninety-seven act is not a hundred percent cost recovery, uh, piece of legislation. At best, because of the reductions and deductions, you can recover somewhere in the range of about seventy-five to eighty percent of the cost of growth. Uh, so there'll still be a contribution from the municipality in many cases, uh, for the infrastructure. This is one of the areas where you can see that, uh, the costs have been removed from the development community. So they've limited services, uh, headquarters for the general administration. So generally, uh, um, the administrative center, uh, is, is something that would be, uh, removed from DCs. They've eliminated all the arts and cultural services with the exception of library. It's the only one that can continue. Uh, tourism, economic development's been removed, um, hospital contributions. Used to be able to generate money to contribute towards expansion of, uh, hospitals, but that's been removed. Parkland acquisition, we can still, I guess, under the planning act, if, uh, the province felt that, uh, you can adequately receive land for parks. So what we have in the development charge now is a contribution towards developing the land into a functional park. And then there's limitations on vehicles and equipment where it must be a significant piece of equipment lasting seven years or longer. The steps that we go through have been highlighted here at a very high level. We take a look at the amount type, location of growth. We take a look at the servicing needs, which translate into capital costs, um, to, to construct that infrastructure. There's, uh, deductions such as grant subsidies, other contributions, turning our minds to whether the, the, uh, additional costs have a direct benefit to the existing, uh, community. Uh, there's statutory ten percent deduction for the softer services, basically the non-water wastewater, storm and roads. Um, there's, uh, we have to do measures of service standards that we can't exceed. That's contained in appendix B of our report. And then we have to rationalize reserve funds moving from one, uh, bylaw to the next. We end up with a net cost that we then, uh, have to allocate between a residential benefit and non-residential benefit. Then we, uh, divide it by the growth to develop the charge. So the charge is on the residential side. It's normally on low, medium and high density, different charges. And then we do a charge per square foot for commercial, industrial and institutional. As I've noted, Bill seventy-three made modifications as of January first, two thousand sixteen. Um, basically, um, one of the things that has to be done is, um, looking at examining area rating. Uh, so it's something that the province thinks that municipalities should at least consider as part of this process. Uh, we haven't recommended area rating for, for services, other than obviously water and wastewater would be charged only in the area where you receive the direct benefit. But for, uh, all other services, we haven't recommended it. Uh, without going through extensive details, um, there's limitations elsewhere in the act, which if you started going through area specific or area rating for parks or recreation or other services, you're gonna end up losing money. You'll end up having to subsidize the, um, uh, those projects with, uh, taxpayer dollars in order to make up the shortfall. Uh, so that's one of the recommendations that'll be before you, um, uh, when you're finally adopting the bylaw, which we're not recommending. Uh, was a requirement to take a look at an asset management, uh, plan for the new capital. We've provided a, a calculation and a commentary in the, um, uh, the appendices. Um, it's not germane to the report we've just done, but they've made changes for the annual report that the treasurer must submit to council. Uh, we reported back to the municipality at the time the act was being, um, um, uh, the adjustments, the Bill seventy-three changes were being, were being put into place. So you've been, uh, undertaking this for the last couple of years. It basically is providing for more transparency. Uh, no additional levies, which is a requirement to, um, not, um, uh, ask the development community for levies in addition, in, in addition to what you would provide under the development charge. And not requiring them to construct works, which generally wouldn't be, um, uh, part of the development charge study. So that's why we went back in. One of the reasons we went back in, uh, developed a more detailed local service policy, in part because of the changes, uh, resulting from Bill seventy-three. Uh, and then they're basically just housekeeping changes to the act that were, uh, that were made. Um, when you adopt the bylaw, um, you, in most cases, have, uh, the ability to recover from most growth. There are mandatory exemptions, not many, but, um, there's a provision in there for industrial buildings that they can expand by up to fifty percent and you can't impose the, the charge. Uh, and then with, um, uh, intensification for, uh, residential units, there's provisions there. So if you've got a single family home, you can add up to two additional apartments and not impose the charge. Or if you've got a townhouse complex or an apartment, you can add one additional building, uh, one additional unit. Once again, not, not imposing the charge. Lastly, just to note, there's a local government exemption so that you can't impose your bylaw onto the, uh, the school boards or onto the county. Similarly, they won't impose the charges, uh, on you. We then have, uh, an area where the act, uh, suggests that you're able to, as a council, uh, and, uh, put into place discretionary exemptions. So things such as you can reduce the charge in whole or part for certain types of developments or certain classes of developments. Uh, for example, a class would be industrial, a type of development would be a church. If the charge is going up considerably over time, you can index the charge. And then the last point is just to recognize that, uh, for redevelopment, if my house burns down or I decide to knock it down and replace it, then I should have up to, uh, four or five years to, um, uh, replace that building without having a charge being imposed. Uh, so generally, your, you've got, um, uh, exemptions for temporary use buildings, uh, places of worship, bona fide farms, and then there are some partial exemptions for the downtown cores for both, um, Ferguson and Laura. Uh, local service policy, I touched on this. Um, it's really just going back in to talk about storm, water, wastewater, internal roads, sidewalks, uh, bike lanes, et cetera, and parkland. Um, it's contained within the appendix to, um, to our document. So I would encourage, uh, people to take a look at that. It's an appendix C, uh, to our document. Um, when we are preparing these reports and coming forth to council, there's always a challenge, uh, that's there before council. With growth, there's gonna be servicing needs, there's gonna be costs. And the challenge is, um, do you recover all or a portion of it from development charges? Or how much do you collect from, um, uh, water rates, sewer rates, taxes, et cetera? Development charge bylaws are not mandatory, but they're, they're the way that you recover the, uh, the, the cost to, um, uh, to build the infrastructure. So just to note, there sometimes are, um, um, from the development community, uh, requests for reductions or elimination of certain types of development. That's fine. You can consider that. We can include it in the bylaw. But you shift it from development charges over to property taxes to fund those projects. Very quickly, this is, uh, an overview of the, um, the growth forecast. The black represents the historic level of building activity for residential units. You can see we've been averaging at about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five units per year over the past ten years. The growth forecast is anticipating a little bit higher, uh, levels of growth, probably averaging in the range of about two hundred and forty, two fifty per year. That translates into over a ten-year planning horizon, about two hundred and, um, almost twenty-seven hundred residential units. And over the fourteen-year, um, about, uh, forty-two hundred units. That would, uh, seek growth of about seventy-two hundred people to eleven thousand people over those time horizons. We've also provided a forecast of the non-residential, uh, square footage area. Obviously, the non-residential, we charge on the square footage of, uh, the buildings. Your, uh, current charges are laid out here. You can see we have, uh, for residential, we charge, uh, low, medium and high density. Singles and semi-detached are your low density. Multiples are our medium density, so that's your townhouses or, uh, similar forms of development. And then we've got, uh, two categories of, uh, apartments, large and small, and then a charge for, uh, non-residential. So a single-family home would, uh, which receives water and wastewater services currently would pay twenty thousand, one hundred and two dollars. Uh, for non-residential, for full servicing, you'd pay that seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. We've looked at the same services as, uh, are in your current bylaw. And, um, uh, what we've, just to note, um, we've released an addendum report and we just summarized very quickly here that, uh, there was a couple of, um, road projects that were missed. Uh, South, uh, South River Road, Gilkinson Road, and, uh, an urbanization, um, for a portion of South River. And then, um, for a pumping station and a few water lines. Um, that being said, we've updated the calculation. I'll show you the, show you the difference in a moment. But this is the full calculated charge. Uh, in total, we'd be moving slightly, uh, upwards to, for a single-family home, to twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And actually, there's a reduction in the non-residential going down to five dollars and seventy-nine cents. And if we look at the details of that, I've provided it on the, um, the single. You can see that, um, the current charge is at twenty thousand, one hundred and two. The draft report we put out, uh, was suggesting a six hundred dollar increase, uh, going to twenty thousand, seven oh four. And then the addendum has, with the inclusion of those seven projects, has upped us to, uh, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty. So in total, we're about twelve hundred dollar increase over your current charge. On the non-residential side, as I've noted, uh, we're seeing a reduction going from seven dollars and thirty-eight cents per square foot down to five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Just to compare, uh, your charges relative to others in the county, you can see that, uh, the highest charges currently are, uh, in Guelph. Uh, right now, the, the, and if I describe the chart, the dark blue, um, would be, um, the, the, I think the dark blue is the, um, the county. Uh, the light blue is the local municipality. And then we have, uh, the very, very light blue at the top being the, um, uh, the education charge. So you can see right now, a full charge in, in Guelph, uh, with the, uh, school board would be almost, uh, thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, and then, uh, as we step down from there, Guelph Air Mosses, uh, their, uh, draft charges are just below that at thirty thousand. And as we move down, you can see, uh, my municipality where I live, Puss Lynch, uh, being at the lowest level, being at about eleven or twelve thousand dollars. Now, I would note, and I highlighted Puss Lynch because in our municipality, you don't get water and wastewater, municipal water, wastewater. So even though it looks like a low charge, I know personally, when I built my home nineteen years ago, I paid ten thousand for a well and twenty-eight thousand dollars for a septic system. So I've actually paid thirty-eight thousand dollars plus the equivalent of the ten thousand. So I, in, in that particular case, I'd be approaching fifty thousand dollars. So sometimes you have to read these comparisons, um, relative to, to what's being imposed. Uh, on the non-residential side, you can see we've got, uh, a couple of the Waterloo municipalities that on the non-residential side are trending up at about fourteen dollars per square foot. Your current charge, as noted, was just over seven and, uh, you're just under, um, six dollars per square foot. So totaling it all, uh, you're about seven dollars with the, um, uh, the charge from the county, uh, in your charge. And then for, uh, industrial, you can see generally they're, they're a little bit lower as well. So that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. Um, as I've noted, uh, June twenty-fifth will be the date for consideration of the bylaw. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks very much, Gary. Um, I'm not sure if anybody is here in the, in the room to talk to this development charge, but now is the point where this comments are invited from the public? Anyone wanna speak to our development charges? Nope? Okay, so, uh, in that case, I will turn it over to questions from council. Council Ketchus?
For non-residential, um, does that include, uh, like casino and hotels and convention centers and, uh, restaurants?
It includes all forms of development unless, uh, number one, you, you exempt it. Um, as you have, you provided an exemption for, uh, bona fide farms. So if I'm building a barn or anything, there's no charges. Um, and then there's certain provincial, uh, basically provincial or federal buildings that are constructed. Generally, you won't be able to impose. They're higher up on the food chain and generally they're, um, they don't pay.
Council Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary, I'm, I'm curious to know on your comparison charts, um, the merits of comparing Center Wellington to some of the other municipalities that don't provide the level of infrastructure that Center Wellington provides. Can you kind of speak to that and, and explain to me just why that's a fair comparison in, in these charts?
Um, we try and provide, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, we try and provide, um, what's within the county and then some of the municipalities adjacent to, just for comparative, uh, purposes. Quite often, people bring up examples and, and, uh, show, oh, look at the charges are lower over here. So we acknowledge that, but as I say, you need to read into it a little bit deeper to understand why. So I gave you Puss Lynch. Puss Lynch is cheaper than you, uh, at the face, just looking at the numbers. But when you look at the services you're getting, uh, it's actually, you're, you're cheaper in the sense that you provide the municipal water and sewer where I'd have to build it privately. So at, at the end of the day, it would actually be more expensive for, uh, a single-family home to build in Puss Lynch than it would in, uh, in your, your community.
Council Ketchus?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was wondering why water services was targeted for the large reduction when, uh, it was just stated that in the non-residential, uh, it's hotels and casinos and convention centers. And they use a lot of water.
They will pay based on the size of the facility. So if you have, um, if the casino adds another ten thousand square feet, then they will be paying ten thousand square feet times the five dollars and seventy-nine cents. So they'll end up paying, um, um, you know, uh, fif- fifty thousand, I guess, fifty-seven thousand? So it's, it's, uh, with their charges on a per-square-foot base and it expands and contracts depending on the size of the building.
I understand, I understand that, but that's not really what I'm asking. I'm asking why water services was targeted for the reduction, which basically it's a dollar ninety-one. It's the major portion of, uh, lowering of the development charges when those facilities use lots of water and...
Uh, it's just working through the calculations on the, um, the sizing of the, uh, water treatment facilities and how many square fea-, uh, sorry, how much, uh, usage there is per capita and per employee. And then dividing it through by the, by the growth forecast. So there's, just looking at the, um, the water use, there's, there's, there appears to be somewhat of a reduction in overall use. And that's how, that's being reflected since a large part of your development charge is based on treatment capacity. Uh, the, the less you use, or if we're seeing a reduction in overall usage, that will translate into the DC going down as well.
Anyone's add a bit to that?
Just to clarify, this is only to provide those capital costs. This is not the actual water use. We recover that through the rates and fees of our water. So if we have a large industry that is using more water, then we are recovering those on the operational user fees. So this is just their one-time capital outlay. This is not the ongoing maintenance and upgrading and things of that nature, of the pipes and things of that nature. This is the one-time cost to provide those services.
Council Ketchus?
It states in this study that we will be, um, you know, needing a new well, which is a capital cost of seven point five million dollars. So why would we be reducing the water fees if we need a capital cost of seven point five million dollars? Because if those facilities come online, they're using our capacity. And therefore, we need to get a new well. So like, it seems, it doesn't seem to fit in that we reduce water charges, uh, to that extent to lower the development charges when we have to make a capital expense in the future of seven point five million dollars.
When we, um, when we went through the calculations, you've built, uh, a fair amount of, of projects in recent times. Uh, a lot of your charges have, um, uh, are debt. So you've built the facilities, they're being utilized, so we've carried the debt charges forward into the calculations. In addition to that, there's, there's, uh, a new well that will be coming on stream and it is seven point five million. When we've done the calculation of how much we allocate to the growth period that we have, we've taken about, uh, ten percent of that into this calculation. When we update, you're going through a, a process to update your official plan and, uh, update your master plans. When we expand out that growth forecast, we'll pull perhaps all of that, um, uh, well into the next set of calculations because we'll have a bigger growth forecast. Right now, this is locked into your twenty thirty-one, so we're staying with that, with that twenty thirty-one planning horizon. Uh, in a couple of years, when we have your, um, OP review and we have the master plans, we'll expand out to the twenty forty-one and we'll pull the full cost of that, uh, well in.
So that just leads me to a clarification then. So the only, um, uh, assumptions that have been made were built on the reports that have been completed, which have been council-approved.
Yes.
So the master plans that are outstanding right now, the long-term water master plan, the Parks, Rec and Culture Master Plan, uh, the Transportation Master Plan, those haven't been built into these assumptions yet because they haven't been approved by council. Once they're built, once they're approved by council, we'll build those into the next rendition of this.
That's correct. And generally, that's why you're seeing on the rest side, there's only a small adjustment because we really haven't changed the planning, uh, planning targets very much. Uh, but we've changed, uh, the, we've, we've just updated the cost of the projects. On the non-residential side, we're seeing to some extent, uh, a reduction in the water use. So there's, that's been reflected.
Thank you too, Mr. Mayor. Um, so basically what we're seeing is we're seeing a percentage of use per system. Uh, and that's how the costs allocated. And I'll, I'll remind council of how we went back, for example, on, I think it was, uh, through a project where we reduced fees towards, um, I think it was Rona that was sitting on the, on the road down there. We looked at it and said that their property could technically have been for thirty-five toilets, but there's only one, I think, in there. So really, it's, it's about the usage that they have in there percentage-wise. And then when it does come online, if it's, let's say, if it happened to grow, then they would pay for the rest of the toilets at that time. But realistically, commercials not using a mass amount of sewer at that or water system compared to, uh, housing units or something.
Council Orpin?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're talking about new construction here, right? So is, is there any way in the foreseeable future that you think the developers should be paying the full price of putting in the roads, putting in the sewers, putting in the whole thing? I mean, um, why is it still a, a future tax burden on the people when that could actually be covered right from the get-go?
Well, there, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, there are mandatory reductions and deductions that are defined in the act. There's not much I can do about that. I, I, it's part of the calculation. So you've retained me to advise what's an appropriate reduction, deduction as we go through the projects. And that's what, what's been reflected in, in this report.
Thank you.
So this is, this is going as far as we can legally go?
Correct.
Council Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary, I think you were here in two thousand three.
Yes.
I think I remember you.
Yes.
Um, back then, council of the day, uh, reduced their DC charges, uh, by seventy-five percent for one year. We discovered after that year that the residential taxpayer picked up the shortfall in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. What's different this time by reducing DC charges now? Why is this case different than that case was? Can you explain the difference?
The, um, back then, you would've generally had the exact same piece of legislation. So I would've made all of the reductions and deductions that I've, for the most part, done here. You then went from what I calculated and then you reduced it by seventy-five percent. So it would be, the equivalent is, I've suggested a twenty-one thousand dollar single detached home. If you impose the same policy, you'd only be collecting a little over five thousand dollars. And you would be funding the fifteen thousand dollars difference from property taxes and water and wastewater rates. So to put it in the same context, that's, that's what you would've been doing. The twenty-one thousand is, I've lost, uh, maybe if I had a... The $21,000 is, I've lost, maybe if I had a full-cost recovery charge, I should be at $25,000. But because of these reductions, deductions, I can only suggest to you a $21,000 charge. So that's, those mandatory charges of taking it from 25 down to 21, and what you did as a council back in 2003 is take it from 21 down to 5,000. So you still had the first $5,000 loss, and then you, you removed another 15.
As worse?
On page 27 of your report, it's indicated there that the township plans to spend almost $51 million over the next five years, of which 31 million, 31 and a half million is recoverable from DCs. That's roughly 62% according to your notes. Is that percentage, I thought I heard you in the beginning of the presentation talk about 80%. Is this 62% the standard, or is it just too low? Should we be closer to the 80%? Page 27.
I have a different numbering system, but I think I know exactly where the...
Oh, you're, it's page three of the report in Roman numerals.
There we go. Thank you. If you take a look in that calculation, there's 6,000, sorry, $6 million, which is, we've referred to as post-period benefit. That is growth-related. It just means that when we, right now, we're doing a five-year, sorry, a 10-year planning horizon, for the most part. When I move forward another five years, I'll pull in that $6 million. So that, if you added that $6 million back in, so you're trending around 37, 37 million, then you would be, and there's $2 million in grants there that you're not paying for directly, so if you weren't getting those grants. If you added all that back in, you'd be at $40 million. So 40 divided by the 50 is 80%. So it is within the range that we spoke of. It's just the, that $6 million post-period, that's growth-related. You will pay for that through the development charge, it's just that it'll be picked up in the next DC update, those costs. Was that, have I explained that at a relatively easy way?
Council Ketchus?
On page 17 of the presentation, you have non-residential development charges, and the Water Services line has at the current level, we're charging $2.60 per square foot, and it's going down to 69 cents per square foot.
Correct.
At the same time, in your, on page 14, you have, that's a $1.91 in reduction, that's the largest reduction. We don't have any industrial land, so we only have commercial and hotels, and they use lots of water. And so I, you may have taken a generalized industry standard all over Ontario, industrial zone, but specifically for us here, they're, they're going to be using water because that's where our future development is. It's in hotels and, so I, I see that large reduction there as problematic because we do need to put another well online, which is a capital project. Those facilities will be using the water, and in the growth forecast on page 14, the 10-year is that we will be adding 2.92, 2 million, I'm, eight, square feet, so let's say the half of that is 4.5. So at 1.91, you're foregoing nearly $3 million, this is half of the well.
Okay. When we've gone through the calculations, part of what the Act says you have to do is you have to recognize the excess capacity that's in the system. So when we were going through the calculations, what we did is, here's, here's the infrastructure you have, here's much, here's how much is being utilized, and then we've looked at how much of, looking at the growth, both residential and non-residential, how much of that growth can we accommodate by the excess capacity? Okay? So that's the first thing that we looked at. And you have debt on a whole bunch of projects that are feeding into that, that you built, that you're still paying for, we've included those, and that brings you up to the maximum well capacity. Then we've looked at, okay, we still need some extra capacity, and that's where the $7.5 million well came in. But the expected capacity of that well, we're not, we're only going to use 10% of the capacity. That's why I haven't pulled the full $7.5 million into this calculation, I've pulled 10% of it, because we need 10% of that well capacity just to finish off servicing the growth to 2031. Okay? That is why the, I'm not pulling 100% of the $7.5 million of the well in now. When I update the calculation, we're going up to 2041, I'll pull the rest of that well cost in, and I may, I may pull in another, another well, I don't know, whatever the results of the master plan provide, they may identify additional projects. So right now, council, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's the situation with the water was, we have a fair amount of capacity, so we have to use that up first. And then we've identified that well where, in theory, we only need 10% of the capacity, and we've added that in, into the calculations.
So again, to, so once the long-term water master plan, the study is completed, the findings from that, if we need additional wells, that will be built in to the next addition of this.
Yes, it will.
Because then it's a council-approved document that demonstrates that direction, that's our infrastructure needs.
That's correct. Yeah, we'll have more growth and more projects.
Council Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary, then I would assume that this explanation is also applicable to the potential $30 million cost of upgrading the Fergus wastewater.
Correct.
Because you'll just be pulling in that part of it. I guess my question is, though, based on these numbers, like, these are good for five years, and then there's another study required, is that correct?
Maximum, yes, that's correct.
So, in light of the fact that we know more or less that the upgrades are going to cost us $30 million, does that mean that in five years' time, we will have a sharp increase in water rates in order to cover the cost of that facility? I'm trying to get my head around, I appreciate your earlier explanation, I understand what you were saying, but I'm concerned about the long-term implications here to the DC charges. If we don't gather enough now incrementally, will we have to gather bigger increments later in order to cover future capital costs caused by growth?
We've, right now, we haven't got as much excess capacity in the sewer system as we do with water. So when we looked at Alora, we're pulling in, from the debt you've already issued, we're pulling in over 50% of the existing debt for Alora is being pulled in. So the capacity we need in Alora is, is over 50% of that new plant. And then there's a Fergus plant expansion that's planned at $30 million, and at this point, we've identified about 10% of it being required to accommodate the growth within Fergus. So of the 30 million, we've got 10% pulled into this, of that plant capacity is needed for Fergus, and we've pulled in, I don't know, 55, 60% of the Alora plant that was just constructed, the debt, we've pulled into these calculations. So it's higher in, on the wastewater side because we haven't got as much excess capacity, so we need to bring all of that, a lot more of the costs into the calculations. So, for water and wastewater, where normally it's two components, when we look at treatment, it's based on flows. So how much capacity do you have, you know, how much, how much, you know, you can take a certain amount of sewage flow into the plant? So how much flow is coming in right now, and how much is excess? When you take a look at the pipes, we're looking at pipes that are needed to basically be extended to cover all the lands that are yet to be grown, to be, to be built. But right now, with the capacity, there's a lot more capacity in the water system than there is in the wastewater system.
Just to add to what Gary is saying, we, we've been recommending that once all the master plans are complete over the next year, that we actually don't wait the five years and we do an update to the development charge background study and bylaw at that time. So in 12 to 18 months from now, we would like to come forward to council with an updated bylaw taking into account all of those master plans, so we don't wait the five years to have that dramatic increase in rates. In addition, you're correct, all the non-growth costs that are identified in the DC study eventually make their way to our water wastewater rate study. We're in line to do an update to that in 2020 to get our water license renewal. So the 2015 rate study would have had some consideration for some of these major capital projects, so it's a matter of updating that in 2020.
Council Ketchus?
I guess this is for Dan, so, so how long of a period would this be valid then, this, this document, if we're thinking of reviewing it and adding to it?
Through you, Mayor Lynton, this, this document and this bylaw would be effective until a new bylaw is put in place to amend it or supersede it. So if we decide in 12 months from now that we're going to update the calculations, we would, we would change the bylaw or put a new bylaw in place at that point in time to supersede this one. So this one would be in place for a maximum of five years, but we're able to make amendments or change the bylaw prior to the five-year mark.
Council Lynton?
Thank you. Not sure if, so basically, we're, we basically take the cost of the project, divide by how many units are going to get used, take 80% of that, and we got our cost because it's capital, sort of across the board. But we always have to obviously upfront the cash to get a sewer plant, for example, the taxpayers upfront the cost, and then we have to wait for development to occur in order to get our 80% back. Have we taken into consideration, or is it normal to take into consideration the finance cost, the interest cost of that money?
Absolutely. And through you, Mr. Mayor, as I was noting with the water projects, there's, I think there's five different debentures that are, that you're paying for right now, and we pulled the interest associated with all those debentures into the calculations.
Anything else from council? Okay, having heard all the comments, I say that the public meeting is now closed. Wish to thank all the comments that were made by council, the deadline for the receipt of written responses from the public is June 8th, 2018. Council will be considering the bylaw at its June 25th, 2018 council meeting. Okay. I said June 8th, wonder why? The deadline for receipt of written responses is June 5th, 2018. Council will be considering the bylaw at its June 25th, 2018 council meeting. Thanks very much, Gary. Okay, moving on, we'll start the regular council meeting now, and the first thing that we have is a confirmation of the agenda, recommendation of the council of the Township of Centre Wellington, committee of the whole meeting held April 23rd, 2018 be adopted. Council Van Leeuwen, second by, Council Fisher, all in favor? And we have our agenda, we have committee of the whole minutes there, April 23rd, recommendation of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held April 23rd, 2018 be adopted as circulated. Mover, Council Workman, second by, Council Van Leeuwen, all in favor? And that's carried. So now we have a presentation, update on the GRCA's scoped tier-three water budget assessment. And we have, that's not Sonia. Welcome, Martin.
Put that on, thank you. Yes, thank you for inviting me to give you an update on the Centre Wellington scope tier-three water budget assessment. Sonia, unfortunately, is, I think she got strep throat, so she's not that well today. So the purpose, can I move on with this one? Okay. Here we go. So, purpose of today's update is to provide you a refresh of the study process, scope and key participants. It's providing an overview of the groundwater flow model development, that's the main part of the presentation, and then address any questions about the process overall. You should note that this presentation is a shortened version of what we presented to the CLG, that's our community liaison group, on May 15. And at that time, we also provided an update on the water supply master plan to the group. Just rolling through a couple of slides in terms of roles and responsibilities, so we have the tier-three water budget project team, it's comprised of township staff, GRCA, our consultant, the ministry, leads the, the actual water budget tier-three study, and is responsible for all the decisions related to this project. We have a provincial peer-review team, you'll see some comments later in the number of slides. It's external, independent and third-party peer-review comments on the technical findings in each of the major milestones, to make sure that we're moving forward with the best available information. We have our project consultant, Matrix Solutions in this case, they're responsible for conducting the actual tier-three water budget with direction from the project team. And then we have the community liaison group, as we call it, CLG. We've established a group to really provide a forum for the community to be informed, provide input to the tier-three water budget and its progress. And we have a terms of reference, we have code of conduct to make sure that the process moves forward smoothly. For those meetings, we also have a third-party facilitator who chairs the CLG meetings and provides facilitation, secretariat services for that, for that group. General public is, is included in the CLG, they're informed about the tier-three water budget, they can provide input on the tier-three water budget through public representatives, and also they can, they're invited to be part of the CLG meetings as observers. Coming to the actual project components, we are now at stage three, groundwater flow model development and calibration, so we completed the initial data collection review, we've collected all the kind of data, and come up with a conceptual model, characterization of, of what's, how the water flows through the underground, and we're now have, completing, we are now completing the groundwater flow model development and calibration. A quick note in terms of the actual process, as we move forward, at each of those milestones, we produce, or the consultant's producing a draft report together with the project team, that undergoes provincial peer-view, and that draft report then is publicly posted and is presented to the CLG. We have the meeting that was held on May 15 in this case, we go through commenting period in terms of meeting minutes, meeting summaries, and we take all those comments and updates back to the project team. And if there's anything that we need to go back to the peer reviewers, if there's any technical comments that we need to go back to them, we do that as well, get their comments, their updates, and then the final draft report is, is completed and then posted on, on the website. So that's what, that's the process we move through every simple, with every single component, so in this case, the model management, sorry, the model development. Here's quite a few words, actually, from the three peer reviewers, I won't read them all through you, but you have it in front of you. They've been very complimentary in terms of the work that has been done. They've also provided a number of very detailed comments, and in response to those comments, Matrix Solutions added quite a few sections and subsections in response to those comments, for example, the flow system and water budget insights, the data gaps, discussions of the cost features specifically, and in terms of model verification, just to clarify, to provide additional justification and make sure that everything is readable. There were a few editorial suggestions to improve the clarity as well. Moving on to the actual water supply master plan tier-three kind of interlinkages, that was a major part of the presentation at the CLG meeting. As we move forward, well, it kind of, a lot of the, a lot of work that we do is kind of starts with some of the protections and some of the targets and forward-looking in terms of what's happening as part of the growth plan and development and growth in the township. And as you, as you know, obviously, we've been updated, the water supply master plan is undergoing at this time, and a lot of that information that is, is being done through the water municipal master plan will be used through the tier-three, through actual model development. Once we have the model, which is the case now, we can then go through the tier-three model application, and the arrows might be a little small on the... And the arrows might be a little small on the, on the slide, but you'll see that the some areas uh, work one way from the water supply master plan to the tier-three, and the other ones uh, go back to the tier-three model application, so there, there's interlinkages going both ways, and I'll get back into, I'll get into a little more detail, um, a little later on. Um, at the very last step, and we're obviously not there yet, SPP stands for source protection plan, and once we have results from the tier-three study, um, as well as the results from the water supply and linking into the tier-three, we'll be at, in a position to then figure out specifically if there's an update and specific uh, work to be done as part of the source protection plan. Uh, so with that, uh, kind of an overall, um, I'm gonna go a little more into detail about the actual numerical model development and the calibration, which was the kind of specific component that we've doing right now. Um, and you may ask yourself, why generate models, what, what's the purpose of a model? Um, and really what, what this means is that we have a tool available, we've now built this tool that we can use, and it contains our collective knowledge and understanding of, of how the water flows underground specifically. It gives us insight to, to those conditions. And it helps us answer questions that we would otherwise not be really test, be able to test in the field. A lot of those, uh, like here's an example, what if we pumped all municipal wells at their highest rates for twenty-plus years and coinciding with a long-term drought? Well, we can't do that in, in, in the field and really realistically, the, the model is a good tool to kind of pose those questions, get answers, uh, responses that we can then evaluate. Um, so, and, and lastly, I guess, um, well, here it is, I should be clicking forward, uh, more readily, I guess. Um, and then lastly, um, the, the tool also, or the model is specifically is, is, is an asset. It's not just an asset to the, to the source protection program, obviously, in terms of needing to go through and answering the questions that we're managed to, to answer, uh, but also for the province in terms of the permit to take water, and, and specifically for the municipality. Uh, as a, as, as, to be able to evaluate municipal water supplies beyond the, the scope of the tier-three study, so it can be used for other, answering other questions as well. Moving on to the study area, it's maybe a little bit hard to see, but you can see the, the orange line, uh, that is fairly large, much larger than the actual township that move, that is on the map. That is our study area, and it's, it's, it's large on purpose, so we don't have any edge effects uh, with respect to actually being able to uh, pro, provide uh, responses to, to, to focus of what is obviously that those nine municipal wells. Uh, three in Elora and six in Ferguson, you'll see them as, as the dots in, uh, there. So you'll, you'll also see that the, the model extent of the model area, the model boundary extends well beyond, and it goes into Arthur as well as Marswell, so it excludes some of the other municipal wells as well. Um, this is, the number here, the twenty-seventeen, the five and a half thousand, uh, cubic meters a day is a, is a, is a, is an average number in terms of the water taking in twenty-seventeen. The model uses various precise numbers, obviously, to, to make sure we, we get the, have the latest numbers in there. In terms of the actual model, it's a, what we call a finite element model, and so it's a fully three-dimensional uh, model, and it's, it's subdivided into millions of elements, and you can see one of those elements, is this the? Oops, no, maybe it's not. Where's the, it, it doesn't work? Well, you can see the triangle, the typical element down there at the, at the bottom, so essentially that, when we talk about elements, those three million plus elements, uh, that, that's one of those elements down there. Um, so the entire model is three-dimensional, so you'll have them stacked on top of each other and next to each other. Um, and now they're all, not all the same size. Uh, where, um, around municipal wells, um, and now, and around stream and rivers, they're much more refined. So in around municipal wells, one of those elements covers about twenty meters. Um, and around streams and rivers, maybe four to sixty, uh, around the Grand River and, and Irvine Creek, for example. But at the, at the, the edge of the model, there, there may be two hundred meter wide, those, those models. So it really is a reflection of the, the focus of this, of this model, it, it is about the municipal drinking water, uh, wells. So what happens is that at each of those nodes, um, the water level is calculated. And then the flow rate and velocity is calculated for each of those elements. Um, and so when we, when we use the model for the source protection, uh, that's, it's, it's designed for that with the focus on the municipal wells. If we needed to answer other questions, we could do that, but maybe in, in some question, in some instances, we would have to update and refine the model to, to, to be able to, to answer questions in, in areas where we don't have as refined mesh. Moving on to the actual model structure, and it really is, um, the, the Centerville model, like many other of those groundwater model, is like a cake. Uh, it's got different layers, and some of those layers uh, allow for increased water movement, that's, that's, we call those aquifers, and others layers, they restrict water flow, and those are called the aquatards. Um, you can see that we have, um, specifically here in Centerville, we have overburdened layers in the model. Those are the unconfined sediment and soil above the bedrock. And then we have the bedrock layers, and in this case, uh, the, the bedrock layers is really where the Centerville obtains its water from. And you can see we have, well, F-one and F-five, the two black lines go well into the, in the God Island, into the aquifer, uh, further down in, in the bedrock. Uh, so in this case, and in this, in this study, the aquifers are the lower Gwelf, God Island and Gasport formation, so those are the, the water-carrying layers, and then sitting above the bedrock aquifer is the, what we call the upper Gwelf formation, that's the blue one. Uh, and that is, that acts as an equitard, uh, across Centerville. Um, hydraulic conductivity, that's one of the key elements, and we call it K-values, a key element that, that in terms of uh, model input parameter, uh, specifically for about storage and, and porosity. And it really controls how fast water moves through the subsurface. And, and you can, you can think through that, uh, with regards of if you, if you dump a bucket of water on, on sand on the beach, the water just disappears. If you dump the same amount of water in the same bucket on a, on a, on a, on a grass, in a, on a, in your backyard, and it's just maybe a little more, a little more clay, it'll stay, it'll puddle, it'll eventually seep into and, and, and disappear, it'll take much longer. So that's really just the, the K, uh, K-value of the conductivity is really just about the porosity and how, how fast water moves through the system. Um, so, once we have the model, we need to look at, uh, what we call calibration, and that's really to test the model with real term data, with monitoring data that we have in the field. Um, so how does it work? Uh, we have, for example, here, um, a simple, um, graph with two wells, and we have observed water levels that we, we measure in the field. And then we run the model, and we, we maybe put in a specific conductivity in the model, and we come up with a result that simulated water levels that is low. Well, we have to run it again, so, uh, and we maybe change the actual porosity, and we run it again. Oh, now we, we changed it too much, it's now too high. So we have to run it multiple times to find the specific uh, conductivity to be able to match the, the relevant monitoring data that we have out in the field. So in this case, um, there were over four hundred unique runs developed to calibrate the model to be, to be satisfied that what the model predicts, uh, reflects, uh, the reality that we measured, uh, in the field. Water level dataset, I wanna spend, um, um, a few minutes or just a, a slide on, on this notion, that there are a lot of data points in the model. In total, uh, there's over four thousand one hundred water wells. You'll see in the, in the map, the, the kind of gray, uh, water wells there from the water, uh, well information system. And then we have forty-eight, what we call monitoring wells, and those are the ones that are, um, that we call, we, we call them high, high, higher quality monitoring wells. Those are the ones that, where we have multiple, uh, monitoring, multi, multiple times, uh, maybe have time series and water levels over, over specific time periods. Many of the other, other water wells, and we may have a specific, uh, water level measurement at the time the well was instr, uh, constructed, but that may be forty, fifty years ago. Um, and that, this is, this is shot in terms of a closer look at what it means in terms of around Fergus Alora. You'll see, um, the yellow ones, which are the higher quality monitoring wells in Centerville. Uh, you'll see one of the, one of the GRCA wells, which is pink, the yellow ones there. Um, and then the, the very light gray, uh, gray ones, the smaller circles, those are the, the water wells otherwise. Um, at this point, I also would like to note, um, and, and acknowledge the, the input, uh, that the CLG members have provided. Specifically Highland Pines and Pine Meadows have provided their water levels data. Nestle Waters Canada have provided water levels data, and Safer Waters Group, uh, they divided their estimated domestic water demand as well. So we're, we're very fortunate to be able to incorporate that data into the model, um, as well. Um, apart from the water level calibration, we also do what we call transient calibration, so that's a, a time-by-time kind of calibration. We look at a time series and, and figure out what it, what it means. Um, and what you can see here is, um, the observed drawdown, that those are the actual points that we're monitored, those are the, the green spots, uh, green dots, and then the simulated drawdown is what you have on, with the, with the black line. And you can see that, um, the specific, uh, mo, the, the specific simulation is, matches very closely uh, to, to the, uh, specifically, uh, to the, to the green, uh, monitoring, uh, observed well, the data. Same, same here, uh, in terms of the actual monitoring data, in terms, this is, uh, in pink. Uh, and then the model, uh, the model is, is, well, it's obviously purple, but I think it's more black. Uh, the, the finer line, uh, is the kind of, uh, is the modeled, um, prediction. So again, we're looking at, uh, at, uh, the overlap and, and the difference between the two, and in this case, it shows a fairly good overlap. Uh, so knowing that the model is matching the well, uh, data with existing data, uh, we can then look to using the model as a predictive tool. Um, now this is one of the, uh, early kind of results, uh, and outputs from the model. And it's, it's what we call a water budget, essentially, uh, or summary of where the water in the aquifer is coming from and where it's going. Uh, so in total, you can see that ninety-eight percent, so pretty much all of the water uh, is coming, uh, is entering the, uh, the overburdened upper bedrock aquifer in the study area. It, it's from the recharge, it's essentially from snow, from, from rain, uh, and, and, and it, it seeps into the, into the, into the ground. Uh, from, and it, it's only about one percent, as you can see the, from the, from uh, both in the overburden and the lower bedrock, comes from outside the, the study areas, underground, kind of flows into the study area. Pretty much all the water comes from the surface. The water that's infiltrating into the overburdened upper bedrock aquifer, aquifer, about six percent of that water is then infiltrating into the lower areas, so now it's in the lower bedrock aquifer. Uh, in terms of the well pumping, we have about two percent each, uh, is pumped out, uh, both at the overburden and, and upper bedrock aquifers, as well as the lower bedrock aquifers. And then you have five percent that is leaving the, um, leaving the, the study area underground. So both in the overburden as well as in the lower bedrock, that water leaves the study area. And the majority of water though, is in form, that is in the overburdened and upper bedrock aquifer, is resurfacing and is discharging to surface water, so it goes back into rivers and streams and wetlands. Um, obviously more for, if you, if it's shallower, it's only about two percent that was in the very deep aquifer, is coming back up to, to rivers and streams. Um, and then about three percent, um, yes, about three percent is, is moving out of the study area. So that gives us a good understanding of where the water is coming from and where it's going. Okay, so once we have the model, now we can look at model, model applications. And it really is a question of, to ask ourselves, a lot of what-if questions. Uh, what, what happens if we put a new well in? What's, what's changing to the water levels at the neighboring wells, for example, or the municipal wells? Uh, what's happening to the water levels if we have land development? If we build big box stores or roads or, or, uh, or other development? What happens to the recharge will possibly impact the water levels? Uh, what happens to the change in the groundwater flow into the rivers and streams due to increased or decrease in pumping rates? Um, so there's a lot of different questions that we, we, we have to ask ourselves, or can ask ourselves, and we can now use the model to help us find, uh, to find answers. What we actually do with the model is, is the following, we can increase or decrease the pumping rates. Like the structure, the actual layers, the, the K-values, all those things, that they stay the same. We have to build the models, and the model, and it actually reflects the, 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 the monitoring well, uh, data, we don't want to change that. What we change are the pumping rates, we can, we can, uh, put in a new well, or we can take one off, turning it off, so to speak. We can change recharge rates, rates, it may be a, a matter of simulating that there's development in a certain area, or it may be a simulation that there's change in climate, uh, as we move, moving to the future. Um, so all those things we can change, turn on or off, and then find out what the model tells us in terms of any change. So, um, with that, I'm gonna move on just a little bit in terms of the process moving forward. Um, and that's mostly with respect to application of, um, of the model. Um, this graph will, uh, essentially simulates, uh, the interlinkages between uh, the water supply master plan and, and the tier-three. So we've moved in the middle, in the, the lighter, uh, the blue squares, we moved from physical characterization to model development to now being able to apply the model. Um, the round, um, kind of, um, circles there, um, are about the water supply master plan. This, one of the areas is actually wrong, the long-term pumping rate is one of the input, not in terms of model development, but in terms of model application. We needed to have that input, or we, we do need to have that input to be able to ma, run some of the future scenarios in the tier-three study. Uh, but many of the other model applications run the other way. So we can run the model to figure out sustainable peak pumping rates, we can run it to optimize the pumping, we can run it to identify potential new well sites, figure out where the water would be available, or we can identify potential impacts to the environment, which is also one of the requirements under the tier-three study. So once we have the model, we can now move on to do the risk assessment, and then, um, well, the other one is the potential effects on climate, uh, which is also on the slide. So, risk assessment is the next step under the tier-three, uh, and that's, uh, with respect to testing future scenarios. What if, again, in terms of the questions that we're asking? What if, uh, under, with the current well infrastructure, that's the given, we, we look at what the current well infrastructure can do? What happens if we have, uh, a prolonged drought? What if, if we have a protected population growth, meaning increased pumping? Uh, what happens if we have increased development, which would mean more impervious areas and possibly less groundwater recharge? Those are the questions that we now can ask and figure out, uh, what, what it would mean. And mandated through the Clean Water Act also, what are the impacts to cold water streams and provincially significant wetlands? Uh, those are also questions that we can ask. You may ask yourself, how we do, how we do, we do assess the risk? Uh, the way we do that is really in terms of predicting water levels. Uh, at each of the municipal wells, uh, for each of the scenarios. And you have here a, um, kind of a, uh, a graph or a kind of a, um, a picture that shows you one of the pumping, uh, pumping wells. So really what we're looking at is, with any of the change in the model, what is the water level in the municipal wells? Is there still enough water to pump, or is there not? Uh, and how much water is still, uh, where's the water level, how much water is still available? So the risk is based on the water level in the municipal wells, and where the water can still be pumped, and also impacts to the surface water, so if, if there's a, um, the specific calculations that we need to do, if there's specific risks, uh, to surface water, that may trigger, um, a, a risk as well that we need to assess as part of the, uh, part of the tier-three. With that, I'm gonna move on to the last slide, and that's the next steps. Uh, the first one, in terms of administrative, that was in relation to the CLG meeting, to, to wrap up the actual meeting summaries, ask for, uh, we've asked for comments. Once we receive those, we'll, we'll meeting, uh, we'll finalize the meeting summary and with the comments and post uh, the meeting summaries as well as the presentation. With regard to the technical work, obviously, now the next one is the risk assessment, number four. So we're moving on to the, to the last, uh, step of the, of the, of the study. We're starting with that, uh, and then once we have the preliminary results, we can, will then move on to provide that to the peer review, uh, committee for their input. Uh, we will then present the preliminaries, uh, results to the CLG, and likely will also come back to this table. Uh, once we have the results, we'll be able to then also, uh, clarify and, and figure out exactly what it means with regards to uh, the source protection plan and any future updates. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Martin, you can tell a lot of work has gone into this, um, a lot of stuff that we aren't seeing here, but you can tell by the slides that there's a lot of work that's gone into it. Um, project completion date, what are we looking, what are we looking at right now?
Um, right now, we are aiming for, um, something at the end, well, next step, I should say, I should maybe start there. The next step would be, uh, to have preliminary results in the fall. And it really speaks to, um, the interlinkages to the water supply master plan, because we can't necessarily, um, complete the study, without some of the, well, now we're getting into the discussion around scoped and not scoped as well. Uh, if we wanted to sc, uh, complete the, the study as a scoped study, the while it was, uh, concept, can, um, started, we can probably complete it by, uh, sometime in the fall. Uh, however, the timelines for both the water supply master plan and the tier-three have kind of converged and getting closer and closer, so in the fall, it may probably be the time to figure out whether we can actually integrate the, the information from the water supply master plan and possibly make, consider the time whether we can move into a full tier-three, uh, to then, uh, be able to complete, uh, the, the full tier-three study. Uh, the timeline will still, will have to be evaluated to, specifically, probably be sometime in, in, in the new year. Um, but, uh, the opportunity is there, that we can possibly look into, uh, because of the timelines converging, uh, we could possibly have a, a full, a full tier-three if we can pull in the results from the tier, uh, for the water supply master plan.
Okay, great, thanks. Colin, anything to add to that from the long-term water master plan timeline? Colin, anything to add to that from the long-term water master plan timeline perspective?
Well, yeah, just, I would just note that we're, we're planning to bring an interim report to council in June, so we have a, a project milestone there. And then also, we're looking, you know, obviously for council endorsement of the final plan, but that wouldn't be till next year. So, so there'll be work going on over the summer into the fall and then kind of the draft final report will be presented to council in the new year.
Thank you. Questions from council? Council morse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Martin, does the tier three study in its scope, does it address quality, water quality? I ask this because, you know, there's five wells in Fergus that have extra treatment measures associated with them because of water quality. So in, in your model, is there any recourse to address that or is it just quantity?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the short answer is no. With respect to the tier three study, only looks at quantity. However, the source protection program does look at both. And as you will be aware, we already have source protection and source vulnerable area around the existing wells in the, in Central Wellington and across the province. So quality is being looked at. Now, what will happen though as well is that the model, the tier three model that is, will be looked, will be used to update the quality aspects. So now that we have this more sophisticated and most recent model available, we will be able to update the, the quality well protection areas, vulnerable areas around the existing wells to, to look at whether any updates need to be done on the quality side.
Council workman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you're saying about six percent gets right down, is there any way of measuring how long that actually takes from the rainfall to it gets to that six percent?
Good question. Now I wish Sonia would be here. I can take that question back, I don't have the answer here.
How was that? Thank you.
It's Marcy.
Martin, another question on your, your model then. I understand your model is going to look at the growth project or the growth projections and pumping wells or pumping capacity and so on. But in the event a commercial water taker came to town, does your model look at potential loss of 1.6 million liters of water a day to a commercial water taker? Are you building that into your calculation?
It's built in, correct, yeah.
Council kitchen?
Thank you, Mayor. I need some, maybe some help on the sources of waters for the aquifer. You say ninety-eight percent of it just comes from rainfall for our aquifer? So is that rainfall in this area or rainfall somewhere else?
You may, if you go back to, I'm not sure it's slide 11, but the study area slide, this speaks around the, the study area. So it's a large area. So this is the, the area that is surrounded with that orange line. So those numbers are for that study area. So ninety-eight percent of the water in that study area comes from recharge. Oh, twelve, sorry, slide twelve, okay.
Can you, I have a question here, Freddie. Can you give an example of, so once we have built this tool, this model, once we have it there, can you give an example after the study is completed, what do you see would be a scenario where we could use this again as intelligence on how we do what we do with water taking here?
Yes, there's a few that I can think of with regards to municipal and Colin, you can jump in. Optimization of the current well infrastructure, so pumping, distribution at the different wells. The model can be used to, to increase pumping at a specific well or decrease it, change those pumping rates and then figure out what that means in terms of possible impacts to other, other neighboring wells or, or surface water and so forth. So to optimize, the model could be used in terms of looking at future areas for new supplies, figuring out where water would be available and, and again, putting a model in, putting a well into a model and then figure out, okay, what is, what, what are potential impacts with respect to neighboring wells or surface water features so forth, so forth. So you can, you can use the model to kind of explore specific areas. There's, well, on the provincial side, just another aspect, obviously the model could be used in terms of any permit to take water applications and the province making decisions on, on those permits. Again, depending on, you can run the model with specific, with specific new wells if the, any new application comes in. So those are some examples.
And I, I would add, it's a condition of the township's permit to take water for the township's well system, that a new well field capacity assessment be completed and this updated model is going to play a very important role in, in, in doing that work and, and validating, you know, our capacity, system capacity at that time.
Councilor.
Thank you. You can really see, especially when you look at the, the study area, how important this is going to be for us as Centre Wellington, for our source water protection area, where a lot of times we're looking at our own wells and our areas around it, we see how much water is traveling in from, I'll, I'll just call it further Wellington County. And of course Kyle's involved in all of that. How much, maybe if we're calling, how much interrelation do we have to ask or to ensure that other municipalities surrounding us are watching their water well? Do we have that Kyle works for the county then?
No, for sure. Great question through Mary Lynton. Yeah, Kyle's position is, is of course countywide and, yeah, water doesn't recognize municipal boundaries. So, so it's really, source protection was, was set up on a watershed basis and, and so part of Kyle's role is not just to look after, you know, source protection within the grand, but he also plays a role in Maitland, Sawgi, you know, in, in other neighboring areas, watersheds that the county actually crosses into. So, yeah, it's, it, it also, Kyle's area does cover what's been identified as within the model domain.
Yeah, Martin?
If I may add, this is projection at this current time, but should there be a risk identified and later on, water quantity areas be identified for those systems? They may extend beyond the Centre Wellington municipal boundary. If they would do, that would also mean that neighboring municipalities would have to be abiding by any policies that would be developed.
Councilor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So do we know the possible results to the aquifer if massive water taking is implemented? And what are the chances that the acquitard could shift and block the aquifers? Do we know how to measure that or is that possible?
Can you explain why I didn't quite get the question?
So if we take, the way I see it is just like there's a bank of water below our surface that we have access to. If we take massive quantities of that water out and remove it from that bank, will, does it affect the acquitard? Can it move and block and restrict flow in the aquifers? Do you know if there's any way of measuring that?
I'm not a hydrogeologist, so I'm probably not the right person to answer, but like in terms of geological thing, I don't think anything will move. What we have to recognize as well is this is not a, a finite amount of water that sits there. As we just seen before, like ninety-eight percent of the water is coming from rain and infiltrating. So this is water that moves from the surface to the underground and then at some stage discharges at, somewhere. So this is part of the hydrologic cycle. So it will be replenished in eternity, like forever. The question maybe more to answer is, or to ask is, are we taking too much in terms of what's being replenished?
Sorry, so the question is, if we take too much, how, how is it replenished within the timeframe that we need more?
Well, we don't, we don't know whether we, we haven't done the, the analysis yet to, to, to know whether we're taking too much or not.
Okay, thank you.
But to follow on with that, that is the purpose behind doing this project, is that we're building the model to answer that question.
Correct.
Okay. Council Fisher?
Just to follow up on that, I might understand when I hear this, that the model is essentially complete and you're just doing sort of final calibration and refining? Or is there still some work to be done to get to that point?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. The model is essentially complete. We are now just running through the final stages. We, we have done the peer review, so the external experts have given us their comments and you've seen some of their comments on the screen. We've run it through the CLG in terms of running, getting their input. This is still in progress, process now, so once we have received all the comments back from the CLG, we'll run it back to the, to the project team and eventually we'll have, maybe we'll have to ask some of the questions back to the peer reviewer, but essentially we'll, we'll then finalize the, the model report and then the model is then final. Now that doesn't mean it won't be updated at another point in time, but for the current use, it would be ready to use.
So Fisher?
Just to follow up, Mr. Mayor, then so roughly, given all of that, do you, do you have any idea when you might start or when somebody might start running various future scenarios, risk scenarios through it and we start getting information from that? Is that something that's coming soon or not so soon?
Very soon. To be a little more precise, once we have finalized the actual model and the model bring report, which is probably going to be done in, in maybe a month or so, then we can, we can start running those. And we will start with the existing, what we call existing scenarios, so that's the current scenarios that we have all the information. Those will be run and then, then, then we'll move into the, some that we can't do yet and that, that's when we have to wait for or have to link in with the water supply master plan. So we'll, we'll be able to run scenarios throughout the summer and then in the fall we'll be able to reassess on how to move forward.
Council Fisher?
Mr. Mayor, again, just, just one follow-up, I don't want to flog this too much, but would, and I think you've already mentioned this in one of your slides, is, is one of the earlier scenarios that you're going to run, the whole issue of projected population growth and impacts of that, is that sort of on a schedule? Do we run sooner rather than later or how do you pick or how will you be picking which scenarios to run in what order?
Thank you for the question, through you, Mr. Mayor. That, that's one of the ones where we have to link in with the water supply master plan because we're not in the, we don't, like the tier three is not there to, to make those projections. We have to wait until the water supply master plan gives us the projections and specifically the future water demands that are based on the projections. Once we have the future water demand figures, we can, those, like the actual pumping demands, then we can run those, we can put that into the model and then run those.
Can you just add a comment from the long-term water masters to plan piece? Because I want us to make sure that everybody is aware of how the projects connect, but how they're asking different questions.
Yeah, so, so the water supply master plan, again, will identify the sequence of projects to obtain water supply capacity for growth to 2041. So that's in a nutshell, the purpose of the project. The linkage back to the tier three, it provides those demand numbers, so our 2041 demand will link back to the tier three. So that would allow them to run those kind of future looking scenarios. So that's why we really had it scoped. It was a scoped tier three initially because we didn't have the water supply master plan completed. It was off a number of years, that's why the project started off as scoped, but now that the water supply master plan is really catching up to the tier three process, there's an ability to look at those future evaluation scenarios. They look at things like land use as well, so we'll, we'll need to know what our future land use in 2041 will look like. As council's aware, there's a bit of a policy review going on at the province right now, looking at densities between 2031 and 2041. So once we get some certainty on that as well, that will also feed into those tier three scenarios.
Council morse?
Thank you. Martin, our wells have pumping permits issued by the province. It's common knowledge that many of our wells don't pump to the limit of their permit because of local issues. So when you come to putting the data into the model, what numbers are you using? The permit numbers or the actual numbers?
Actual numbers.
Actual? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, we have no recommendation here, this is for information, so thanks very much, Martin and for the whole team and the community group that's provided some strength to this. Appreciate all the work that's been done, like we're calling and your team. Thank you. It makes a lot of sense that we did both these projects at the same time, it seems like. It's good. Thank you. Okay, so the next item that we have on the agenda is a delegation from Save Our Water, we have community group here. And Jan, are you? Oh, Donna's here. Okay, welcome, Donna.
Save Our Water appreciates the opportunity of bringing forward a request today. We agree with Mary Lynton when he says nothing is more important to us than looking after our water and we were in full support of council's resolution that declared it as a public trust. We're really happy to see that water fountain across the way. That's fantastic. Looking forward to the one on Mill Street as well. So under Wellington County's official plan, the population growth in Centre Wellington is coming to the urban areas of Ferguson and Alora. It's due to double the urban population and we're confident that population growth will continue past 2041. We know the township requires dependable, robust and accessible new sources of groundwater to service this population and our future generations are relying on decisions made today to ensure that there is water readily available for them. We acknowledge the ongoing uncertainties and data gaps of the science, the wild card unknowns of climate change, the rate of rapid growth now and beyond 2041, and the complexities of finding new sources of municipal water. We therefore cannot support a large-scale water extraction for commercial water bottling at the edge of this urban area. With these factors in mind, it's now time to take another step to protect the water. We request from council a resolution making it clear that Centre Wellington is not a willing host to new water extraction for commercial water bottling purposes. And it's also important that this message be made clear to the provincial political party leaders and all local candidates prior to the June 7th election. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Any discussion or anything from council on this one? Council Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to deal with this. I happen to agree with the request. I think it is time that council took a position that follows from the positions that we've already taken with respect to this issue in terms of declaring water a public trust and in terms of saying that we were, at the time we said it, not interested in any kind of special arrangements with a commercial water bottling operator. I think the logical and timely next step is to say, as the delegation requests, that we go on the record as saying that we are not a willing host for a commercial water bottling extraction or operation in this township. And, and it's logical and it's timely because of course, no surprise, there is a provincial election underway and I think it's very appropriate that we inject this concept into the provincial election and see where that takes us. There's no guarantee it takes us anywhere, but at least it's out there. Hopefully people will ask the candidates who come knocking on their door, maybe they'll take a position, maybe not, but it's on the record how we feel. And I, I think back and I think what triggered this for me was, I'm sure Councilor Workman remembers it very well, his extended public job interview. His question, that, that was a salient response, was simply put about our situation on Middlebrook Road. He has to respect the will of the community and, and, and Mr. Workman, as he was then, councillor now, said, "I see the ribbons, I see the signs, I think I know and I think this community has expressed its will very clearly, as clearly as it can." And I agree with that, I think we all agreed with that and as a result, I think it's good that we do what Save Our Water is suggesting today. The reason it's important today is because this is the last opportunity before election day. So I have taken the liberty of preparing a draft resolution, I'm going to hand it around. I don't know if you want to read it because I know you're going to read it again. Thank you. Thank you. I'll put some, all right, here, there's more. I am prepared to move it, if you want me to read it, I will. If you just want to read it yourself, that's fine. I'm in your hands on that.
Yeah, if you move it, it'd be awesome if you read it all out.
All right, I will do that. It's longer than normal, but not terribly long, so I will say. Uh, whereas the population of the urban area of the township of Centre Wellington is mandated to grow to approximately 52,000 by the year 2041. Whereas the township is dependent upon accessible and environmentally secure groundwater for its municipal water supply. And whereas the township is currently studying its long-term water supply options through both the scope tier three water budget and the long-term water supply master plan. And whereas the preliminary findings from these studies have identified the need for additional sources of groundwater to service its projected growth to 2041 and beyond. And whereas the council of the township of Centre Wellington has by resolution declared water resources within the township to be a public trust, now therefore be it resolved that, one, township of Centre Wellington is not a willing host community to any new commercial water bottling operation or the taking of water for that purpose under any circumstances. And, two, the township of Centre Wellington opposes the issuance of a permit to take water pursuant to the Ontario Water Resources Act and associated regulations to any individual person or corporation to enable the extraction of water from any source within its boundaries for the purpose of a commercial water bottling operation. And three, the township clerk is hereby directed to distribute this resolution to the leaders of the four major political parties in Ontario and to their individual candidates running in the provincial election within Centre Wellington prior to June 7th, 2018. And that would be moved by myself and I'm hoping there's a second.
Uh, it's seconded by, uh, Counselor Workman. Uh, I would request that a, a recorded vote be taken for this. Any discussion on this? Counsel Venon?
Thank you, two questions. Well, one, first off, and on point two there, um, says oppose the issuance of permit to take water, um, and it goes on to, it's, uh, from any source located within the boundaries of the purpose of a commercial water bottling operation. Are there any current small, um, companies that take water for a purpose that would fall into this? That, that I wouldn't be aware of?
I think, I believe there's one operator already in Fergus, uh, water bottling, what is it? Aqua Clear? Arctic Clear. Um, I'm not sure what the threshold is of their use, I don't think it's very large. Uh, number one kind of tries to reflect that when it says we're not a willing host community to any new commercial permits. And I hope that captures it and protects them. The idea is not to capture them in this, the idea is to say they're the existing ones and we're talking about new ones. So, that's the intent of that, if that needs to be beefed up, I'm certainly willing to look at that, but I think it's covered. They would presumably, if they need a permit, and it's not even clear that they do, they would already have one. And if they don't, they don't. So I don't think they would be caught in any way, in a negative way, but I don't know.
Counsel Venon?
Thank you, sorry. The reason I ask that is because, um, I did notice it said new on number one as a commercial, but every, every time they have to go back for issuance of permits, water bott, water permits, from what I understand. But I just wanted to ensure that we weren't also putting anybody out of business, that's currently a smaller one, because it is, number two is very specific, it opposes the issuance of a permit to take water. And it's, um, it was within its boundaries, so it's very, very specific, it sets it as a separate item from number one, as not, not being included in the statement of number one. So I'm a little concerned with number two, if we have some smaller, um, companies that are running and actually take water for the purpose of commercial, uh, what would that look like?
Okay, there is a reminder that, uh, the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change is the one that actually makes the rules on this. And this is just a resolution to council saying that we're not a willing host, so it wouldn't really stop any operations or stop any new ones, except that we're saying that we're not a willing host to that.
Right. Sorry, and I guess if I can, the, um, that's right, it, it is, but it's what we're requesting from them, I understand it's there, but it's, it would be, um, and, and I'm actually not even opposed to this, but it's number, um, want to make sure that we're informed when we make our decisions, that we don't go, oops, we just ask for something that's, um, restricting within the community that we, we didn't quite think about. So I think, I, I put it to the table to ask for wisdom whether or not number two should be included in it.
Uh, Counsel Fisher?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand the concern and, um, I'm not sure we have all those answers, although my belief is, I don't think there's any commercial water-taking operation here that requires one of these permits, whatever the threshold is. I do believe we need to say something more than simply that we're willing host, just to express our opinion. Uh, I take the point that the mayor raised, that whatever we say here is, uh, declaratory, it's not, uh, making law, it's not imposing new requirements. The province or anybody else is free to do what it wishes with this, but I think it does express, uh, our, our will to deal with large-scale commercial, uh, water bottling and water extraction for water bottling purposes. And large scale by definition is anything that requires a permit. And, and they are large, it doesn't capture smaller individual uses and it doesn't capture smaller commercial uses that fall under the threshold, which I don't believe, or which I do believe, anybody that's operating now is probably well under. We don't know, and I take the point. Maybe the only thing we can suggest is if we do this today, it needs to be ratified in a week at council, and if it's publicized and if anybody is adversely affected by this, uh, presumably it would come forward before council and maybe make us aware of it and then we would make whatever alteration we need to make. I'd hate to take this out now and then find out it wasn't necessary, because I think it does add, it doesn't add an element of clarity to what we're, we're asking. And the other thing to keep in mind too is that this is a sequence of resolutions, this would be the third resolution we've passed on this issue. I hope and expect that it won't be the last. And I hope and expect that as we get more information on what's coming from the long-term water supply study and on other things, who the new, who a government is that we're going to be dealing with, uh, going forward, uh, we may have other requests to make, uh, prior to the expiry of the moratorium, which is in January of 2019. And may, that may be as simple as extending a moratorium, that may be suggesting some kind of legislative changes to give a resolution like this, the will of a municipality, more weight in the permit issuing process. So this isn't the end of the, the process by any stretch, it's a logical progression from where we are already and where we, I think, and we expect we want to go. So, uh, if there's any suggested amendment now that you want to make, and to, to clarify this point, uh, I would suggest we go forward, I'm pretty confident that it's not going to capture anybody negatively, certainly doesn't put anybody out of business. Um, and if there is a, an issue going forward, I would hope we would find out about it before this resolution is finalized, uh, next Monday at the council meeting.
Uh, one, Andy just mentioned that one of the changes we maybe need to make to be more accurate, the population, uh, if we take out of the urban area, cause just the urban area is going to be about forty-three thousand, forty-five thousand, so maybe we just say whereas the population of the township of Centre Wellington, because then the fifty-two thousand is accurate, otherwise it's not really accurate. Okay.
Yeah, I see that and I can take that as a friendly amendment. I think the issue is though, and we want to be careful, the issue is that we're really talking about the population of the urban area. And this was always a problem when we put percentages in, because some people have said, oh, well, Centre Wellington's going to grow by 50%. Other people say, well, no, when you're talking about water, it's going to grow by 100% because the municipal water service, uh, services the urban area and most of the new population is going to be there. So, try to put these figures there to, to avoid any confusion with percentages, I'd be happy to go back to percentages if we knew what, one we should say, but if you want to be accurate, I think we are talking about, because we're talking about the impact on our water system, which is confined to the urban area. So the numbers that are relevant, whether they're a percentage or whether they're actual population, uh, apply to the urban area. So I think that, that's the concept we want to get here, however you best think it's expressed, that's fine, and I'm okay with that, but that's, that's the crux of the issue.
Yeah, so my, and then we could just change the number from fifty-two to forty-five to be accurate and then leave the urban thing there. Brett, can you just clarify? Is that, is, would forty-five by forty-one be accurate?
2041 population for Alora Salem is, uh, just a little over thirteen thousand and, uh, Fergus is just shy of thirty-two thousand, so it's about forty-five.
So we just?
Yeah, that's a friendly amendment, as long as that captures the idea that it's a significant increase in the urban area.
Hello?
Thank you, it does capture that in, as the urban area, but, um, we are monitoring also the, the wells of, the private wells and smaller places that are in the country, so is the water that is not within the municipal boundaries, is it also not, is not things that we protect as well? So that, we look at the growth numbers of the entire township. Again, I think it's about the statement, but I, I think that, um, the entire water source, if we pump dramatically out of this water source, we will affect ground levels in, in the rural areas as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure it matters all that much, the, 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 the statement is what really matters. Counsel Ketchus?
For, uh, number two, I think if we just added new to, uh, any new individual and new corporation, cause that, that would protect existing. It's just reiterating, the first line there is more of a generalized that as a statement, the second one is actually about the permit under the resource, and we could reiterate new, and that would just cover all the present.
So Counsel Ketchus, you're saying that the township of Centre Wellington employs the issuance of a new permit to take water, under two?
No, he's saying put new in front of individual and new, and new in front of corporation.
Yeah, you could do it either way too. You could do it either way, if it's the same thing, but that's not what you said. But then, yeah. But new permit is the key thing that we want to uncover, right? Yeah, Counsel Venon?
Thank you, the reason I asked if there's any, because we have Martin sitting here as well, who's, they're doing a, a water study to check, to see how many, who's pumping and what, they should actually know if we have any permits currently out there that are taking water. I would think that there should be a pretty extensive amount of knowledge in this room, even from Martin who's doing that, if there's even a permit out there, then we don't have to worry about this. So are we allowed to, can we ask that?
We're having a motion on the floor, this is where you debate if we've closed off discussions.
I'm debating if you can ask it.
I mean, if it's, if it's what you need to do to get through this, I, I think you can, it's procedurally incorrect, but if you need to do it, you need to do it.
So you, but I want to be very clear on the question, because I don't want to now have, open the door to five or 10 more questions. So the question is specifically, are there any new? Existing permits that this will negatively impact? Commercial water taking. Okay, are we okay to ask that, this question? Okay, go ahead, Colin, you got it?
All right, uh, um, thank you. Um, so I've just, I've got the ministries, um, mapped all their permit to take water locations, um, within Ontario. And, uh, um, the only, only two are kind of in that north-east Fergus Industrial, um, and they're at municipal well locations. And so, so I don't believe there's a, a permit, uh, on that well on Dixon Drive that, uh, based on what I'm, I'm looking at here on the ministry's website.
Counsel Fisher?
Thank you, that's very helpful. And I think just to be clear, when you read this, this is not every permit to take water, this is a permit to take water for the purpose of a commercial water bottling operation. So, again, it's pretty restricted to a very specific situation, I'd suggest.
Okay, so we have a couple, we have a couple of changes here. You want to go through the changes and make sure that they're all friendly? Is that what we can do now? Okay, so first friendly one was to do the front, the, the, the first clause there, whereas the population attached to Centre Wellington is mandated to grow to approximately 52,000 by 41, is that okay? Well, we, we kind of, we kind of play with both, because it gets to Steve's point about we want to protect the water system across Centre Wellington, not just the urban centre, right? Is that fine with everybody? Okay, and the next, um, friendly amendment was?
No, we're doing it, so we, procedurally this is out the door, so we might as well just fix it.
So, um, the next one is, is under the now, be it res, therefore be it resolved that under two, that the township of Centre Wellington opposes the issuance of a new permit to take water? And so that, that cleans that up, is that okay? Counsel Ketchus, that, that do what you want, okay? So that would be the friendly amendments, and we have a mover and a seconder already? Are we okay to call the question on this one? Okay, all those in favor? And that carries. And Carrie's going to go through the recorded vote.
Counsel Workman? Counsel Van Loon? Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Mar?
Yes.
Counsel Ketchus?
Yes. Good discussion, that covers that off. Uh, moving on to, thanks, uh, Donna and Jan and Save Our Water for coming and presenting today. And thanks to Martin and the GRSU for, uh, giving us an update on the tier three, looking forward to some of the initial findings that come out of that. And thanks, Colin, you're, uh, Kyle, you're on for something else, right? Or were you here to support that? Okay, thanks to you then too. Okay, consideration of reports, eight point one, we have a temporary extension of a liquor license Grand River Raceway, report, um, is provided and, uh, our supervisor customer service deputy clerk Lisa is on that report, you have anything to add to that? Uh, any questions from council? And Lisa can answer those. Oh, Paul's also here, welcome Paul. If you have any questions about this, Paul Walker's the guy that's going to answer them. Anything from council? Okay, we're okay with extending that liquor license, perfect. I have a recommendation here, that the council of the township of Centre Wellington has no objection to the extension of the proposed extended licensed area at the Grand River Raceway as outlined in the, in their letter dated May 2nd, 2018, with respect to Wiener Dog Races, event scheduled for July 6th, 2018. I know what I'm doing, July 6th, 2018. And that the council of the township of Centre Wellington has no objection to the extension of the proposed extended licensed area at the Grand River Raceway as outlined in their letter dated May 2nd, 2018, with respect to the industry day scheduled for Monday, August 7th, 2018. And that the council of the township of Centre Wellington has no objection to the extension of the proposed extended licensed area at the Grand River Raceway as outlined in their letter dated May 2nd, 2018, with respect to the annual truck and tra, tractor pull event scheduled from August 24th in 2018 and August 25th, 2018. Move for that recommendation? Counsel Ketchus seconded by? Counsel Fisher all in favor? And that carries. Good job, Paul. Eight point two, wireless public alerting. And we have, uh, Linda from the county here, I think you have a couple of items on the agenda, Linda, welcome Linda.
Thank you, Mayor Linton. I just, I think both reports are, um, they're for information purposes only with respect to the wireless, I apologize, it's probably a little late, I'm sure most of you are aware of what's going on and some of you may have received the test on May 7th and some of you may not have received the test, but I think overall it's a good thing in terms of public alerting, uh, that we're moving for, that the, uh, federal, uh, through the CRTC is moving forward on it and the bulk of the public education and, uh, information is going to be coming up federally because it's, it's a national, uh, system and program, uh, backed up through the provinces and then we will tag on with whatever information is, uh, is brought forward through that in the coming years, so. Just to note, there'll be, probably be another test sometime in September as well, so hopefully it, it goes well.
Thanks, any questions from council? Okay, I read the recommendation that the council of the township of Centre Wellington accepts report CAO 2018-17 dated- dated May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, regarding wireless public alerting for information only. Move for that recommendation? Council Morris seconded by? Council Van Luin all in favor? And that's carried. Second report, uh, six, eight point three, provincial emergency management review. You're up again, Linda.
So I don't have much to, to add what's in the report, other than to say, um, as noted in the report, there were a total of fifty-two recommendations in total. The province is moving forward internally with certain recommendations that are very much theirs. Anything that's related to municipal programs or related to the legislation is of course, because of the RIT, isn't moving forward right now, um, and we're playing a wait and see, uh, position until after the election. I think a lot of CMCs in the province are, are hopeful that things still progress, because I think there's time, and it, it's time for changes to the legislation. It was, it's, it's outdated, and I think our programs and, and what's in that need to be brought up to date, but right now, we're playing a wait and see with it, so. Unless there's any questions, um, again, the reports for information.
Any questions from council? Okay, I'll read the recommendation that the council of the township of Central Wellington accepts report CO, CAO two thousand eighteen dash zero six dated May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, regarding the provincial emergency management review for information only. Can I have a mover for that recommendation? Council Morris seconded by? Council Fisher all in favor? And that is carried. And I just want to say thank you to Linda and your team, uh, for all the work that you do on emergency management, um, we did a, um, a night, we had a night, a pretend ice storm last week. And it was, it was brutal, the ice, trees fell down, all kinds of bad things happened, but it was all pretend. So we went through that exercise, so appreciate, um, the work that the county does for, for helping us, also wanted to do a shout out to Chantel and Julie from our office here, they did a lot of work. Um, and staff took this event really seriously, and we had some significant BBMs uh, flying through, uh, for a couple of days, it was two, two days of things going on in behind the scenes, so appreciate staff's time and attention on, on this, because it'll help us when, if, if an emergency ever happens like that, we'll be prepared for it. So appreciate all the time that staff took, and, and thanks for your leadership on that.
Well, thank you, and again, thanks to staff, I think it was a little more intense and a little more involved than what we had originally anticipated, but I do appreci- appreciate everybody participating, so thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Okay, moving on to, uh, we have a partial demolition here of a listed property at one twenty Union Street, and we have our senior planner, Marianna here, welcome Marianna.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Linton. So this report before you is for partial demolition at the property at one twenty Union Street West in Fergus, and it is for the detached garage only. The notice was received, and the heritage committee did review it, and the staff in the heritage committee feel that the garage could be demolished, it does not contribute heritage, uh, value to the property. The owner is actually proposing, it's a new owner, um, the property is in the process of being sold. So the owner would like to build, construct a garage in the same location, similar style, it's just that the existing garage is in very poor condition. So staff and heritage committee have no objection and recommend approval of the demolition.
Any questions from council on this? Okay, I'll read the recommendation that the council of the township of Central Wellington approved the partial demolition request for the detached garage at the listed property municipally known as one twenty Union Street West Fergus in the township of Central Wellington. Can I have a mover for that recommendation? Council Fisher seconded by Council Workman, all in favor? And that carries. Moving on to zoning amendment bylaw, uh, source water protection screening areas, and we have a report from our managing director of planning and development, Brett.
Thank you, Mayor Linton, um, we had a public meeting on this proposed zoning amendment, uh, on April the thirtieth. It's a requirement of the source water protection plan for Lake Erie, uh, which came into effect on July first, twenty sixteen, and it directs municipalities to update official plans and zoning bylaws to incorporate the requirements for source water protection. And as I noted at the public meeting, a couple of weeks ago, the county official plan was updated, and then subsequently, we started working together with, uh, county planning staff and with Kyle on a model zoning bylaw, and that is, uh, what we've used to create this zoning amendment. There were no written or oral submissions, uh, received on this one.
Thanks Brett, questions from council? Council Ketchus?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, um, Brett, if you could answer what the impact of this, uh, source water protection is for the industrial area, is there any special things that have to be done there?
Um, yeah, well, obviously, we do have a couple of municipal wells up there, so the wellhead protection areas, you can see, they do incorporate almost the entirety of the, uh, of the current industrial park, so. Um, the one thing that the, that the county of Wellington did, and it's part of its, uh, uh, risk, source water protection plan, is to go for a risk, what's called a risk management as approach, as opposed to a prohibition, we wanted, we knew that we were gonna have existing uses throughout the county that are in the wellhead protection areas, so. Um, what our screening is, when it comes to sort of new builds, um, applicants, if it's a building permit or going through site plan approval, they consult with, uh, staff at the counter, if they're in one of these wellhead protection areas, they have to fill out a, uh, a screening report. And the screening is used to help the risk management official identify what approach he needs to take, uh, with that operation. And, uh, so it could include, um, what's called a risk management plan, uh, where the risk management plan identifies, it could be things like if it, issues uh, that could take place on an industrial site are, you know, the handling of chemicals that are the, the types that would be a contaminant. So those types of things, how to handle chemicals, um, properly store them securely with a concrete pad and that sort of thing, are the kind of things that gets looked at um, through the, through the risk management plan. As far as an outright prohibition on, on uses, there's very, uh, very few of those. And, um, with the uses that have gone in the industrial park, uh, to date, it really just ends up being kind of part and parcel of the site plan approval that they're going in through anyways, with the lock grading and the drainage and uh, and that, so it hasn't, it hasn't seemed to be a, a significant burden. So far, there have been, uh, some challenges when we're having a building that's built where, at the time that they're building it, the owner doesn't know if it's gonna be tenants and what their tenants' activities are gonna be, so. Um, there's been a, a couple of challenges with that, not, not in the Fergus industrial park, but elsewhere. By and large, it's, it's a risk management approach.
Council Ketchus?
Thank you, Mayor, I was wondering about, um, what, um, protocol is for farms, especially for animal processing um, with the risk, with this, uh, wellhead protection area?
Um, again, there's certain, there's some prohibitions on agriculture, it largely deals with the, that immediate hundred meters around the well, and the spreading manure and things like that. But by and large, with the agricultural operations, they're doing, um, they're doing nutrient management plans anyway, so the farm community is kind of already, um, they already understand that they, when they want to expand a livestock facility or build a new manure facility, they have to go through that nutrient management, and as part of nutrient management, they have, they have to observe the source protection plans anyway, so. Um, as far as the, the, the farm things are, are not in this zoning bylaw, they're already directly in the source protection plan.
Anything else from council? Read the recommendation that the council of the township of Central Wellington give three readings to a bylaw to amend, bylaw two thousand nine dash zero four five as amended, in order to implement the requirements of the source water protection plan. Move for that recommendation? Council Morris, and seconded by Council Ketchus, all in favor? And that's carried. Moving on to, uh, St. Andrews Street East Municipal Access Agreement. And Colin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Linton, um, so the, uh, the report, uh, before you today is, uh, municipal access agreement, uh, related to a portion of unopened road allowance, um, off of St. Andrews Street between St. Andrews and St. Patrick Street in Fergus. And, um, just some background, um, on this, um, essentially, as we were, uh, looking at the design for St. Andrews Street, um, maybe Lisa can pull up the, the map, the study plan perhaps on the, on the screen? Yes, yes it is, yeah. Okay, um, so i- in the background, uh, there's a, a, a very old home, uh, it's an old stone home that's um, close to the road, and, uh, um, as we're doing the design with adding sidewalks and, uh, and curbs and storm sewers, um, by doing so, uh, we were essentially eliminating, uh, their parking spaces. So they, the, the front of the house actually encroaches onto the road allowance, uh, of St. Andrews Street. Um, and their, their parking area, they had a little circular driveway, um, or they do have a circular driveway, and it's, it's pretty much fully within the road allowance. Um, so as we were looking at, uh, the design, uh, we entered into some discussions with the homeowner about relocating their driveway. Um, they, there's not a lot of options, uh, to the left of their house. Um, there's not enough space to locate a driveway for two vehicles. Um, and they're basically to the right of their house, they're right on the, um, unopened road allowance boundary. And so, so the only opportunity for a new driveway, um, was within that unopened road allowance. And so, um, it's very challenging grades in around there too, as you can imagine, it's, it's, uh, quite steep, like, if you can picture Gartshore Street coming down the hill to St. Andrews, um, that's basically the topography we're working with, um, just a block down. And so, um, so we came up with, uh, uh, a driveway design, um, and, uh, that's satisfactory, uh, to the residents and also to, uh, uh, to staff. Uh, we've also drawn up, worked with Smith Valeriot, or SV Law now, um, drawn up an agreement that just, uh, outlines, uh, some of the responsibilities, roles in terms of maintenance and liability um, associated with, with them using the road allowance. Um, another little complicating factor too is their septic, um, system is within, uh, encroaches with, into the right of way. Um, again, this is a very old, old home, and, uh, and so that will be, uh, they will be connected to, uh, municipal services um, through the road reconstruction project. And, um, so yeah, so, uh, staff are, are, uh, seeking, um, authorization from council for uh, managing director of infrastructure services to execute the municipal access, access agreement between the township um, and, uh, and the homeowners. Any luck with the, uh, the drawing, no? Okay. Okay.
Any questions from council as we pull that up?
There we go. So really quickly, you can, you can kind of see, there's the home there, um, the property line kind of bisects the, the two vehicles that are in the, that's the proposed driveway, um, within the unopened road allowance, where the two vehicles are parked there. Uh, we will need to construct a little retaining wall, um, and, uh, and there's obviously, there's an encroachment, their front, uh, porch encroaches onto the right of way as does, as part of their house, so we're working with them on a separate encroachment agreement as, as well for, for those. Um, uh, there's also a large trunk storm sewer, uh, that's coming down that road allowance. Um, so that's being built over the, the trunk storm sewer, and, um, um, yeah, and I would just add, this is similar, we did a similar agreement, maybe a couple of years ago on St. Patrick Street, um, at the top of the hill for access to a, um, access to an existing home, after two homes or two, two lots on St. Patrick Street were, uh, created and built on. And there's a drive, so there's a driveway with a similar agreement, just at the top of the hill, um, on St. Patrick.
Questions from council? Okay, I'll read the recommendation that the council of the township of Central Wellington authorizes the managing director of infrastructure services to execute a municipal access agreement between the township of Central Wellington and the owners of five twenty-five St. Andrews Street East Fergus regarding a new residential driveway for the subject property that is to be located within the unopened municipal road allowance located adjacent to the site, move for that recommendation? Council Workman, seconded by Council Morris, all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to drinking water quality system manual report, we have Karen here. Welcome, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Linton. Um, as per the QMS communication procedure, the owner must be kept up to date with the status of the quality management system. And this information pr- report has been provided to you as the communication. Um, I just want to say in brief, the highlighted feature of the report is the upgrade to DWQMS two point zero. So that is the drinking water quality management standard given by the ministry, has been updated to two point oh, and our operational plan has to meet the requirements of that. So we've completed that. Uh, next steps are, we will be doing our internal audit, followed by a management review, which will cover it, and then our third-party auditor will come in and, uh, audit us on that as well. So I'm happy to take any questions you might have about the report.
Thanks Karen, any questions from council, Council Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Karen, can, in the report here, it speaks about your continuous improvement process. Can you give me a b- brief description of that?
Okay, so, it, the, quality management really is about continuous improvement. So not only are you doing internal audits, but you're also doing, um, anything, any of the processes that, that go on, you can be looking at data, um, pretty much anything within our system, and you're looking at what can be improved. Uh, we create corrective actions, um, that would follow up, looking at what is the issue, what's the root cause of the issue, and what do we do to improve it? And by looking at root cause, you're trying to get to the basic, um, cause of any issues, so that they don't happen again. So in the new continuous improvement, they're looking at preventative actions, so you don't wait until something has gone wrong. You're looking at what you can improve, so that you're ahead of the game. You don't, you really don't want a corrective action, you want to be ahead of it, do, doing preventative actions, so that you're always continuously improving.
Yeah, follow on, Council Morris?
So who does this, is this a team that you have, or is it just you, or who, who are the people involved with this?
Um, it is a team, so we have a QMS leadership team, which I am part of that, as well as Dino and Rick. Um, we sit down monthly, we're looking at, once again, all the data, the processes, what we need to do. Um, even having meetings with staff, if there are, um, suggestions by staff, you would consider that and look at it and decide whether you wanted to, um, make changes to your processes to continuously improve. And it also comes back to, uh, management review, anything that comes out of management review that they're looking and they're asking us to make improvements, um, we have to consider as a corrective action, that will now be a preventative action, and, and do improvement. So it's a, it's a team effort on that.
Great, any, um, any, uh, concerns that you or Colin have about our drinking water?
Well, for me, uh, the whole quality management system, I see it as such a benefit to what we've been doing. Um, part of it is the continuous improvement, part of it is that you are looking, you're looking at data, you have this standard that the ministry has provided to you, so that puts all municipal drinking water, um, systems on this, on the same playing field. Um, they do a very good job, they do an annual, um, workshop on quality management, which, which I do attend. There's, there's excellent communication from the ministry, I must say that if you have any questions, they're more than willing, I can talk to the director, um, one-on-one right away, if you have questions and concerns. So the continuous improvement, I think, it's, it's good for all of us. Um, are we perfect? I don't think we're ever perfect, but there's always room for improvement, and that's what this is all about. I think in the updates that they've done in the new standard, they're asking you to look at your risks. Then you have to take those risks, and you have to look at those at, um, your infrastructure review, because it's all about looking at it, you can know what your risks are, but if you never do anything to improvement, to improve them or take that, those risks away, um, there's not any continuous improvement there. there's not any continuous improvement there. And they're asking you to start looking at best management practices as well. So if, if you may think you're doing something well, but by communicating and looking at best management practices, there's always room for improvement. So like I said, we're not perfect, but I think we're, we've, we've come a long way since this started in, we implemented in 2009.
Cause sometimes you hear that we have trace amounts of something. I just want to make it clear to the community that our water is, goes through rigorous testing and we're satisfied with the quality of the water that we provide to residents of Centerville. So yeah, no, our, our water quality is, is second to none. It meets all the provincial legislation regulations where, I don't know how many thousands of samples we're, we're taking on a, on an annual basis. But it's, goes through probably the, the most rigorous testing in North America, if not the world. Like Ontario, because of Lockerton, the regulations are, are extremely stringent. And they're, they're basically setting the pace and in the industry. So in terms of water quality, the, the water quality, it is, I'll admit, it's, it's a hard water that we have as most groundwater systems are. But it meets all the provincial, federal standards, no question. Thank you. Council Ketchus?
Thank you Mayor. Is there like a taste test for water? In terms of how it tastes? Because it might pass all the regulations, but it might taste, you know, funny.
Part of the quality management system is, and I think in their management review reports, is looking at customer concerns. Often we will get calls regarding taste of water. Often it is associated with the chlorine, which is, we're chlorinating the water to keep it safe for people. So we try and deal with that. If people have big concerns, we do take extra water samples and have them tested for them. Once again, no system's going to be perfect. We have people that move in, that they would be on a private well and move into town and they are, they are going to notice the taste of chlorine. And that's, that is really just a fact of, we have to do disinfection. We have to meet a level in the water so that, that is at the furthest reaches of the distribution system to ensure that it's safe.
Thanks Karen and thanks to the whole staff team that helped make sure our water's safe. Appreciate it. Appreciate you giving the report today. I'll read the recommendation that the council of the Township of Centerville receives as information the quality management system annual report as outlined in IS 2018-05 dated May 22nd, 2018. Move for that recommendation? Council Workman, seconded by Council Van Luin, all in favor? And that's Karen. Moving on to joint compliance audit committee. You got your name beside that Karen? Don't use my secret button.
Through Mary Linton, section 8837 of the Municipal Elections Act now requires municipalities to establish compliant audit committees. Similar to the process we did for this current council, we're proposing to, council to establish a, a joint committee with the Wellington County and Wellington County municipalities. And that's what we're asking you to do today. Just as a refresher, the compliance audit committee, there are two reasons for it to be enacted. One is if an elector who is entitled to vote in a municipal election believes on reasonable grounds that a candidate has contravened the Elections Act, they can apply for a compliant audit, audit of an individual candidate's election finances. The other reason to enact a compliance audit committee would be, new legislative changes now require the clerk to report on any contributor for a candidate or third-party advertiser who has exceeded their contribution limits. And that report has to be considered by the compliance audit committee. So it's a, it's a little different than the last time. We're proposing, should council establish the committee, that we will then move forward with, with appointing membership, anywhere from three to five members. Yeah, and that, that's pretty much sums it up.
Any questions from council? Okay, I read the recommendation that the council of the Township of Centerville approves the terms referenced for a joint compliance audit committee in partnership with the Wellington County municipalities as, as attached in report COR 2018-42 dated May 22nd, 2018 for the 2018 to 2022 interim council. And that the mayor and the clerk be authorized to execute a bylaw establishing a joint compliance audit committee for the 2018 to 2022 term of council. Can I move for that recommendation? Council Van Luin, seconded by Council Ketchus, all in favor? And that's Karen. Eight point nine operating results as of December 31st, 2017. And we have our financial manager, deputy treasurer, Mark, here to give this presentation. Welcome Mark.
Thank you Mary Linton. So just briefly to summarize the report, the 2017 year end surplus is approximately $403,000. That represents a 1.69% variance from the tax-supported budget. I looked at the average for the past five years for that variance from the tax-supported budget and it worked out to about 1.9%. So we're slightly below that. One thing to keep in mind, rule of thumb for budget variances in a municipal saying is plus or minus 5%. And that's considered reasonable if it's within those limits. Historically, the township's practice has been to allocate the surplus to the general capital reserve. And then it may be allocated to capital projects or other reserves upon council approval. Just generally appendix or attachment B provides a lot more detail, but the main reasons for the surplus or the main favorable or positive variances were the winter control budget, which comprised of the snowplow of the roads, the sidewalks, some snow removal in the downtown areas. There was also some unfilled positions in corporate services during the year or positions were vacant for a month or two due to turnover. And there was also a restructuring in the ITNS department. And also investment income came in significantly over the, the budget estimate mainly due to an increase in the prime rate last year, which subsequently means we earn more money on our bank balances and get better rate on GICs. The unfavorable variances, there were only, well I guess one of them sort of smattered throughout various departments and that'd be repairs and maintenance for vehicles and equipment, facilities and roads. And there was also an unfavorable variance for volunteer wages in the fire department. I think that summarizes up the, the report. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm gonna let, we have a delegation here. So I'm gonna let Donna Mador come and speak to, speak to her, her area, her issue and what she wants to do then. When we're done that, we'll open it up for council discussion about everything that's included here, including what comes out of the delegation. Welcome Donna.
Mary Linton, thank you. I'm here as a resident of the first line of Fergus and I'm seeking approval to have some of this funding, surplus funding that was just spoken about to pave the 1.9 kilometers of the first line in 2018. And I'm seeking approval of course from the council. And there are two things to consider here and I've already presented some of these issues before. In 2017, July 27th, 2017, our tar and chip road, which was turned into a tar and chip in 2005, was pulverized. And now it's just simply graded and sprayed. And the extreme dust from that road is one issue. But the other issue is a lack of stabilization on the road itself. Within a couple of days of grading this road, it turns into, the only way we can describe it is a washboard effect. You know, you're driving up the road and it's like, ooh, you couldn't hold a conversation. It's a washboard in two days. The other concern, and I know I've spoken to Colin Baker, hi Colin. And I've spoken to Andy Goldie about asking what the aggregate is in the components used in this tar and chip road in 2005, what it consists of. And who did the tender? And the MSDS for the aggregate? Because I can't tell from the chunks that I have collected, because there are always chunks that kind of fall to the wayside when the road's graded and regraded, whether it's limestone, granite, or both. So if this dust, it's very fine dust, which we all experience and some of our neighbors are here behind me can attest to this, that the dust is horrible. But if it's dust from granite, we're a bit, very concerned that it could be silica dust, which is not a good thing. So we'd like this to be taken into consideration. We need to know what the MSDS says. And the tender would be whoever the contractor was that did this tar and chip in 2005, who they were? And do they have a record of this? And if it is that dangerous, then why not pave our road if the money is available at this point? Approve the paving of the road in 2018. So that's the request that I have. Any questions?
Thank you very much Donna. Yeah, you have a question? Okay, question, Council Ketchus?
Prior to 2005, was the road paved?
Yes it was. And it's only 1.9 kilometers, it's not a long stretch of road by any means.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks for sitting through the whole council meeting. We're having a discussion right now. So Mark has presented the over, overage and he's identified what has been over and what has been under. So we went through the budget process in 2018 to set priorities and knew that if there was surplus that we'd come back to this table to make decisions. Right now, the recommendation is to move that, move that surplus over to the capital reserve, general capital reserve. And that gives us some time to identify what the priorities are based on what we've established in our asset management plan and our roads condition study. So that's where, where, what staff's recommendation is sitting at right now. Do you want to add anything to that foundation? Is that, that's accurate? Okay, so turn it to council. Members of council? Council Ketchus?
I'd like to motion that the surplus operating funds go to first line for the 1.9 kilometers and repaving of that.
Okay, motion's on the table. Secretary for that motion, Council Workman? Okay, discussion from council? Council Van Luin?
Thank you, I must admit, didn't, didn't have enough time to, to go towards our residents. But I think what we need to bring forward, back to council is the fact that there's a lot of projects that we have that we've pulled out and we, we generally do this at capital budget time when we look at these projects. One of the difficulties with, and, and we'll see throughout the year, we'll top out projects that we've agreed upon or that we've already chosen and we'll take it out of the general capital. The difficulty is six years ago, we chewed up a road, it's called the Gualfera Masa town line I believe, or West Gary town line. And this is the first year the tender's finally gone out for a tiny portion of that road. Same, same scenario, tar and chip road, six years of absolute, what do we call it? Terrible days for these people. And if we make, if we make spur of the moment decisions with this money towards the first line, when these other people have been waiting and waiting and going through the process and they've actually brought forward, signed petitions and everything as well throughout the year and we've said, no priority, we have to get through it. So remind council not to make a knee-jerk reaction, but to go back through our priorities and remember that we have also placed other people in this waiting line. And I hate to say it because I'd love to pave them all, the first line included, but I would rather wait till we go through the budget process with these funds and then allocate when we have all the projects in front of us with their dates on them.
Council Ketchus?
Although I do appreciate Council Van Luin's concerns about allocating this money early, the fact is, is that it's, it's surplus. And this is a project that is slotted to be done earlier than the six years. And as part of, you know, concerns for their possible silica or dust because of the tar and chip, I think that it is, part of our mandate is to do service and to do capital projects for areas that are necessary. That the Gualfera Masa are, had to wait that long, well, that's, that's very unfortunate. But I feel that these funds are here right now and it should be done as soon as possible. It's one of our last tar and chip roads and I believe that it was paved a long time ago. Then it went to tar and chip. And the maintenance for tar and chip is every four years, that wasn't done. And that's why it deteriorated into now a ground-up tar and chip. So I think that, you know, for these residents that are paying taxes and that road is much busier than it was when it was converted to the tar and chip. I think going back to an ash fault paving is highly commendable for that, for this, for those monies.
Council Morris?
Thank you. Colin, this road, is it, is the road bed good enough for pavement? Or are we into a much bigger project if we were to pave this road?
Through Mary Linton, yeah, my understanding when, when the, the road was, was pulverized, so there's, it's a very thin layer of, of tar and chip. So maybe like an inch, inch and a half. And then a great deal of the granular A base was mixed up in that. And so our view just based on that information is that the, the road base is in, in good shape. Other discussions from council? Council Fisher?
Just one question. Is the cost of doing this within this surplus amount that we've just identified?
Through Mary Linton, so yeah, I believe we budgeted 3, 350. And it currently sits in 2021. And as Council Van Luin was referencing, we've got the, the Aramosa West Gary town line. We actually just awarded the first phase of that today at Tender Award Committee. So that completes the third to the fifth line. Next year, the plan is to do the county road, so from County Road 29 to the third line. Again, those are sections that were paved and the pavement was removed. We also have Nelson Street in Bellwood where the pavement was removed, I believe was 2012. And that's scheduled for re, for paving in 2019. Council Vella?
Thank you. I think what's happening now is, is if we had brought each one of our delegations here and had a little bit of a war over that, whose funds, where, we're back to a capital project or capital funding meeting. And this is the difficulty with it is, over time, we begin to forget, well, what projects do we have going on? When we get into this ground-up, ground-up, hardtop, same scenario, if we're comparing apples to apples, I'd have a hard time voting for, I, I really do want to see it paved, but I would have a hard time voting one person's project above another project strictly for the purpose of they showed up today and the other ones didn't. And when we're really looking at apples-to-apples programs. So we have to be informed as council when we move with decisions. And on a one-off basis, I don't see how we're informing ourselves with all the projects.
Yeah, I mean, from my, my perspective, I completely agree with Council Van Luin. We set our priorities when we do our capital planning projects. We, we look at all the priorities and we look at our roads condition assessment, we look at our asset management plans and we make well-informed decisions on what our highest priorities are. I don't like this process, I don't think this, and I, and I appreciate that everybody has the ability to come and speak to council and councillors have the right to put a motion on the floor. But to me, that- and councillors have the right to put a motion on the floor, but to me, that's not the way you make big capital decisions. Um, our, our, our professional town staff are not recommending that this is the highest priority, uh, road to do right now. Um, and we have to, we have, we have, we have so many people who, and other members of council know this. We have people who are calling from all over, all of the different wards have, have gravel roads. This is not inconsistent with gravel roads that we have across center white. And that's the way it's always going to be. Um, and we have repavement planned for some of them. For this one to jump the queue, um, it, it does, it's not the way we make good financial decisions. Um, so I will, I won't be supporting it because we went through this process during the capital, uh, projects already. We establish what our priorities are and we gotta stick to those. I mean, we, we have to have, uh, we have to have, uh, us, uh, composed way of dealing with our priority bridge and roads project and it's not, it's not like that. So those, that's my two cents. But it's the will of council. I mean, this is, this is why we're, we're going, going before council now. Councilor Ketchus?
Can I have a recorded vote for this, please?
Be busy today. I don't know. Anybody else want to say anything on this one? Councilor Workman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so who is next in line? Do we know who's next in line for this?
Colin?
Was like, and who's ahead of who, like, uh, Aramosa?
What would be our priorities? Like, we have a, we have like a thirty page, ten year capital, uh, plan. Um, what's, what's, what are we looking at as far as the next big project?
So, so in terms of, like, for the ones that fall in the category of, uh, rural roads that were paved, uh, deteriorated and we could no longer maintain the asphalt. Uh, so the ones that fall in that category, we, we really have, uh, four, four segments. So the first one, um, is, is Aramosa West Gary Town Line, uh, from the third to the fifth. Uh, so that, like I said, just Tender Award Committee this morning, um, that's, uh, uh, that's awarded, so that'll be done this year. Two thousand and nineteen, uh, we're looking at, uh, Aramosa West Gary, uh, Town Line from Wellington Road twenty nine, um, to third line, um, is slated in for twenty nineteen. Uh, we've got a section of, uh, Aramosa West Gary Town Line from the sixth to Wellington Road twenty six, uh, for, uh, like a gravel road rebuilt. Uh, that's in twenty twenty and then twenty twenty one, um, is the, uh, is where we have the first line. Uh, so from nineteen, uh, sorry, Wellington Road nineteen to side road ten, um, is the section that we're referring to in the budget for three hundred and fifty thousand. And like I said, uh, we have Nelson Street as well was one that, that was removed. It's a smaller section. Um, uh, and it's in for twenty nineteen.
Councilor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on that, what, just in very brief terms, what are the criteria for assessing the priorities? How do you determine one should be in twenty nineteen and one should be twenty? Is there a set objective list of criteria and then you fit these projects based on those? How does that work?
Through Maryland and, um, i- it's based through the budget process. So, so staff presents, um, you know, what, uh, what, through the asset management plan, through our master plans, what, uh, what the capital project priorities for these ones specifically. Um, it was budget availability and I, I don't know how much they've shifted through the years, but I think they've been kind of in those few years and they've just kind of each year been shifting closer till now finally we're at the, the first, the first section. So, um, you know, a project finds its way under the ten year capital. Sometimes it's sooner, a little bit further. Um, but, uh, these ones, um, it's, they've essentially found their way based on, um, the timing of when the asphalt was removed and the timing when the township could afford, um, to, to complete the capital project based on other priorities.
Councilor Workman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, if this is posing a health risk, wouldn't it be wise to put the ones that fall into that category on the fast track instead of, um, just putting them into the normal system?
Yeah, through, through Maryland and, um, yeah, regarding the health risk, uh, so, so we've got a lot of gravel roads, um, and, uh, again, like, we're in the process. We, we are looking for the, uh, material safety data sheets, um, for the product that was used um, on first line back in two thousand and five. So we are, are looking that up. We've reached out to, uh, the Miller Group, which was MSO at the time that did the tar and chip. Um, so we're, we're looking into that route to see if that, um, see if there's any, any hazards, uh, that, uh, we should be aware of that may be any different than, than those other gravel roads.
Yeah, Andy?
Just also as part of that, um, when we do do these tenders, we typically follow the provincial standards. So these are roads and road types and gravel types that are used throughout the province. Um, we're not suggesting that we make our own mix. We're basically going by provincial standards as to how we do our tar and chips, what the product is. Um, so those are all, you know, you're gonna find thousands of kilometers of these throughout the country. And as Colin said, we've got hundreds of kilometers of gravel roads. Um, one pit could be in one location and another pit location could be another. Uh, so if we start, you know, we are investigating it, uh, but we could have every row, uh, every, every gravel road, uh, residents raising similar issues to us.
Councilor Van Lewin?
Thank you. And I think that even if we follow that line of thinking for priority, um, we have the same gravel. We have a tar and chip that was chewed up six years ago. It's, it's the same dust hazard, the same priority, the same need, um, same health risk, the same. So, and realistically, that's, it, it's on a road that's traveled and a lot of dust and actually we show you the emails from years back. It's a similar, very similar complaint. So to see that this, and this is a huge, long, long stretch of travel road with many residents, same thing. Um, so I think that looking at it going, you know, how do we make these decisions? What do we do? Uh, the question always comes back, that information comes at budget time. Doesn't come in piecemeal today, here and there. And I think that's what's important, that, um, I'm perfectly willing to have that conversation at budget time. I'm opposed to, um, jumping the line with no information and putting a project immediately forward because we happen to talk about some extra funds. And I think that we, we should have this discussion at budget time.
Councilor Ketchus?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to ask Colin, um, earlier in this meeting, there were, um, discussions about, uh, development charges allocation. And there was, uh, additions, um, like Carlton Place Road. Was that on the, uh, asset management, uh, priority list, uh, before? Or was that just added just for this, that, that we needed to add to the budget for allocating funds? Where, where was that project? Cause that's, that project is now moved to two thousand and nineteen. So I'm just wondering, uh, you know, so what was the criterion for that project?
Uh, through Maryland and so, uh, development charges, uh, background study outlines, you know, a number of projects that are required to service growth, um, growth in, within the township. And, and some are very site specific. Some, it's, uh, very obvious that, you know, this subdivision or this development will trigger the X project. Uh, some are more, uh, township wide benef, wide benefiting. Um, and so might be, uh, like a water tower or, uh, treatment plant. And so all those, um, projects are listed in the DC background study. Um, but at the end of the day, whether it's for, you know, larger, uh, sanitary sewer pipes to service a denser development or a, uh, more population than we thought initially, that could be a possible DC project. You know, if we, um, uh, need improved fire flows, uh, you know, to service a new development, that's a little different than what was there before. We have undersized pipes, uh, that would be triggered by growth. So development charge projects, you know, the timing, we, we try to mesh where we can with the growth that's happening, um, in the area. And we try to time those development projects. Obviously around Carlton Place, um, we're anticipating some pretty significant, uh, uh, growth occurring in that area. So we're trying to mesh that project with the growth occurring in that area.
Councilor Ketchus?
So we did change where Carlton Place was in the asset management plan to move it forward because of growth.
Sorry, through, through Maryland and, um, I don't believe Carlton Place is, is in the asset management plan, cause again, it's, 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 uh, a growth related project. It's, it's not necessarily an infrastructure, uh, renewal, which is more what the asset management plan focuses in on. Um, it's more, um, again, triggered by growth as opposed to a kind of life cycle, um, asset management type project.
Councilor Fisher, did you have your hand up a minute ago? Yeah, I thought you did.
Yeah, and just, just kind of following up from, from what I heard of Colin about the priorities and, and what I heard from Councilor Van Lewin too, I, I take the point and I do tend to agree with it that we don't want to, um, make what amount to capital budget decisions sort of on the fly ad hoc and that it should be part of our discussion in each budget year. Uh, but I'm wondering too, from what I heard, at least what I took away from what Colin told me about how the timing and the priorities are set, and forgive me if I've got it wrong, it sounds like there really aren't that many objective priorities. I was thinking you'd say, oh, well, such and such a road is far busier in terms of traffic counts or speed limit or whatever, and therefore you need to move up or down how it's maintained. It sounds like it's more of a convenience thing in terms of the dollar amounts and where it slots in. Now, if I'm wrong about that, please tell me. So it, it occurs to me, and if we have that conversation in, in twenty nineteen for, for the budget or the next council has that conversation, is it possible to do something like we did, uh, analogists with the pavement management program where you get a problem, could be in a number of different locations, but there's a problem here. Previously paved roads that have become gravel, deteriorated, there's little segments here and there all over. And maybe instead of having separate little budget items for all of these spread out over the years with no objective reasons, it seems to me, why one is in one year and one is in another. Maybe we can, and I, no pun intended, but maybe we can aggregate those things somehow and, and have a bigger capital budget item each year to do a number of those little things. But treat it like one bigger and like the pavement management program, which we do in urban areas. So I just throw that out there. It's a discussion, how we deal with these things. It seems to me, we do need to be very clear on why certain projects are in certain years. People have been waiting, uh, people are having problems. I agree. I don't believe it's a safety problem, but it's certainly a nuisance. Is there a better way to deal with these rather than saying, well, we fit this one in this year because it's convenient and we fit that one in that year because it's convenient? And they get spread out and can we somehow put them together and maybe make a bigger budget item each year like we do for the paved roads in the urban areas and then deal with them on a more, I don't know, systematic way, uh, each year. And I just put that out as an idea. I think it's a discussion that how we deal with these things maybe for the two twenty nineteen budget. But give people some assurance, we're gonna be looking at it sooner than, wow, we put you in twenty twenty one and we're not gonna deal with it until then.
Can I just get somebody to make a comment on the, the criteria? Because I don't want it, I don't, I don't believe that it's all related to what we actually, what, what we actually can afford, that there actually is criteria that we use to prioritize our roads. Like we have a roads condition study, we have that kind of stuff. So if you could say, if you could give us that, because I know we get into a lot of discussion at the budget process and we talk about things like that. And I know that staff provide us advice and their recommendations. And it's not just if we have a pot of money available. So it's, so can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, no, I, I apologize for, um, uh, yeah, really just, and, and Dan's got the asset management plan, um, uh, open here and, and so there are, are set criteria. And so we, through the asset management plan, we've, we've taken a risk-based approach, um, to assess, to, to, to determine priorities. And so risk is, you know, um, uh, you know, probability of, 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 uh, you know, uh, an event times the consequence. And so we've looked at, um, in this case, um, you know, the, the speeds of vehicles traveling, the, uh, volume of vehicles as well. So, so these are, these get all worked into, um, establishing the priority, uh, of, of the projects within the asset management plan. And, uh, um, the projects mentioned, um, they're all listed as, as high, they fall in that high, uh, priority within the asset management plan.
Just in, uh, just responding to Councilor Fisher's, uh, uh, idea, I like the idea, um, the challenge being with that, as in our, um, pavement management, our sidewalk, we're talking two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars for the year in smaller chunks. Just to give you a perspective on the capital budget, it's four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the first phase of the fund, uh, for this year. Next year, we've identified, uh, four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars for one road section. I can't find Nelson right away. Um, and here we have in twenty twenty one is, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, for the first line. So we'd be probably having to say, even if we could find five hundred thousand dollars in, that would be one road section at a time. Cause typically these roads that have been turned back from tar and chip or asphalt into gravel, we're trying to do them from concession to concession or line to line. So it's a fairly large expense. It's not cost effective just to kind of do, you know, a kilometer, then another half kilometer. And so that's our challenge with the repaving of those. Um, uh, and they've been there, um, as long as I've been on council, I can, or at, uh, at the township, I can remember, uh, the, uh, West Gary line, uh, and I can remember Councilor, um, no, Counselor, um, is that where you were saying? Fisher, Fisher, uh, yeah. Visser? Yeah, Counselor Visser speaking about this segment of road and the complaints and concerns that he's have risen over the years, uh, with not being able to get it repaved in a timely manner.
Councilor Ross?
I think persistence is a virtue, I think. And the fact that this lady has come back, um, again, to talk to us about her road is admirable. I think Counselor Van Lewin's reference to the people on the town line having waited six years represents a failure on our part. We should have responded to that a lot sooner. I think all of us would feel differently if we were neighbors on the first line or on the town line. But we don't live there, so we don't experience the frustration, the dust, the concerns, the issues that they express to us today. I found it telling at the town hall meeting in Bellwood. When the meeting was over, that one of the men that farm out in that area of West Gary came to me and basically said, you know, you're fixing the wrong bridges. The one that we use the most to get to our farms, our fields is way off in the distance. So we have to go around the bridges that you do fix or use the bridges you do fix to get to our fields when the closest bridge is postponed and pushed way off into the future. I, I think there's something wrong if we're just simply using a plan that cerebrally we look at and say, oh, this has got to be done, this has got to be done then. But we forget the feelings and the concerns of the people that live in these areas. I think we have to take that into account and there are special circumstances that arise, such as today, when we have to address those feelings and those concerns of our residents. It can't all be just simply a cut and dried theoretical plan. These are the people that pay taxes. These are the people that are concerned. Why is it not right to respond to them? I'd like to know the answer to that question.
Um, I just, I just, uh, just for curiosity sake, um, how, how many councillors here live on gravel roads? So we're, we have a lot of gravel roads in our community. Um, we all deal with dust. That's why it's more important than ever to set priorities. Because it, it, you know, out of the tw, uh, out of the, we did twelve, uh, uh, town halls since two thousand and fifteen. And one of the things that keeps coming over and over again is we need to fix bridges and we need to fix roads. We're never going to do things fast enough. We have to set priorities. It's really critical that we do that in a, in a comprehensive and holistic manner at budget time. It, we cannot just go from situation to situation depending on who has the loudest voice. That's not the way you do good government. You establish your priorities, you stick to your priorities and you make sure that they make sense. And you're providing accountability back to the taxpayer on how you set out those priorities. That's the way we have to continue. In my mind, that's the way that we have to continue to do road, bridge projects like this because, because we know that- Because, because we know that we, we have a large pool of, of infrastructure that we have to get to. So we have to absolutely establish our priorities and stick to our priorities because they make a lot of sense. Counselor Van Lewin?
Thank you, um, you've said something there, Counselor Morris, that really, uh, kind of sets with me because it says, you said we've, uh, we as council failed these people, and it's taken six years and we failed them. And I look at this and go, this is six years to get us through the process. We would today fail them if we moved forward and beyond them with funds to another project while there's pieces where they have actually come to us, petitioned to us, brought for their piece, waited for the pieces, and we made a knee-jerk reaction, it wouldn't even be right, it wouldn't be correct. Then I would say, um, Counselor Morris, we failed as a council because we looked at something completely different when we made a plan based on good information. So I look at it and go, six years to get here? It takes a long time with the, and to be responsible with taxpayers' money. But failing them would be to make a decision on our emotions away from information. Those residents have a voice at this table today, they are persistent today because I'm sitting here being persistent for them. That is the persistence that I'm bringing forward, that is why I'm not wanting to fail them. So if I have to go back and look them honestly in the face and say, I am persistent and we're not here to fail them. So therefore, um, I can't vote for this because it has no information behind it, and that would be irresponsible.
Counselor Kitchess?
First, I'd like to answer the mayor saying about gravel roads. This is not a gravel road, this is a tar and chip road that was ground up, that previously was paved, and that's different. The road that I live on, that's a gravel road, has never been paved, never been tar and chip, so it's not even the same criteria. Second of all, through, through Counselor Van Lewin, this is not a betrayal of taxpayers, that they have concerns and express them repeatedly in this council, and for our consideration. And there is data for the first line, and it's not just some random feelings. It's about, there is data, it's going to be done, and this money is available right now, and we can make the decision right now, and it's not a failure to make this decision. It's actually responding, as Counselor Morris has said, it's not just raw data that is abstracted because of an engineered, because the farmer there, if we asked him, would say, no, you did the wrong road, and it's this other road that we really use. That input, we, we shouldn't consider what actual residents want. We should consider raw data that's abstracted because of criterias that don't actually apply to the people living there paying the taxes. I disagree with you, I think responding to what residents want and trying to, when the time is available, and when there's extra funds to, to allocate that, is responding correctly.
Counselor Van Lewin?
Thank you, just as one final point, I guess that's what I'm saying is, I have multiple, uh, residents as well. So that's, it's not, uh, this is not a response to data. This is a response to say, slow down council, take an informed decision because we have more than the residents that are just sitting before us, because I want to pave this road, I want it, I want to move forward with these projects. But there are residents that are also coming forward, they have been persistent, they've been constant, they just don't happen to be sitting before us today, and that's my point. It's not about the data that the staff are running forward, it's about the fact that we went through informed data at the time of capital, and there are residents asking the very same question, just not before us today. And that's why I voiced their concerns on their behalf.
Counselor Workman?
Thank you, Mayor. So if this money doesn't go to this particular project, is there a chance it'll just get gobbled up by the machine and won't be spent on the roads that need to be done?
Well, I can answer just the machine part, because if it's the machine, that's us. So if it gets gobbled up by the machine, we're the machine, so that can't happen. So I'll, I'll leave what the process would be to our scale.
So council's policy is that all surplus each year go towards our capital reserve. We do have a capital reserve policy which states how much we want to have in that capital. Uh, it is there for emergency situations, and so therefore, as you've seen in some of the reports where a project is over budget, then we go to that. If it's under budget, then the funds typically go back unless it's identified, uh, a specific grant or some other type of funding resource. So it is a reserve in order to continue to support the projects that council has approved as priorities for two thousand and eighteen and have a balance so that we have the ability as a safety net in order to move some of those projects forward if we require to do those.
Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is, this discussion's obviously touched a nerve, I think, on all of us, and I think there's some really good points on, on all sides. The deciding point for me would be, is if we agreed to the request today, what do we say to the other people who've made similar requests in the past? What do we say to differentiate this situation from those so that we could say, this was a special situation, this was different? There was a reason why we felt we needed to do this now as opposed to you, or you, or you, who might be in a similar situation? And, uh, I think, and, and the answer you don't want to have is, well, they're all really the same, but someone was here today and made the request. I think that's the point that, that Counselor Van Lewin is making. So we need a better reason to, than, than that, if we are going to agree to this. And what is the reason? Is there an objection, uh, objective reason? Is there a data reason, a scientific reason, a traffic reason? Something we could say that, you know what, when we looked at it, there's a really good reason to do this ahead of that. Because if the situations are both the same, you need a good reason to say this instead of that. And, and again, coming back to the point I think that's being made here is that it has to be more than someone made it to the meeting and someone didn't. Cause there's a history of, I gather, from a lot of this, a lot of people have made similar requests over the years. And that's the point that's being made here is, since these requests all seem to be the same, and since we have to have some way of choosing between them, we have a system in place that allows us to do that. And it's imperfect, but it's a system, and so it shows that we're not just responding to the emotions of the moment or the people here in the moment. I would be very thrilled if we could say to the delegation here today, yes, we can do it because you've outlined or you've told us, there's a reason, we didn't know what it was, now we know, and now we can differentiate your situation from other situations that we thought were the same. Um, I haven't heard that reason yet. Um, and if that's the case, we do have an obligation, not only to the people who are here, but to the people who aren't here, but who are experiencing the same things. Because they're also taxpayers, they're also voters, they also have made requests. And we have a system in place at the moment that is trying to deal with those. If we deviate from that, we need an extremely good reason to do so.
Counselor Kitchess?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Colin, I was wondering, what are the traffic counts on those roads, um, that, uh, need to be, uh, repaved in that category? Um, not all of them are the same. Um, and so this, uh, road, which is first line, is, is, is there traffic counts about that? About how, um, much it's used in comparison to other ones?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't have that, that data at my fingertips right now, I'd have to, I'd have to report back as to what those traffic counts would be. We, we likely do have data, uh, for those segments, so, um, I'd have to, to get that and report back.
Okay, can I call the question? We have a mover and a second for this, we've had law class opportunity to discuss it. Um, so, um, can you, do you have, what was the motion that we have on the table? Okay, so here's what we have, that the two thousand and seventeen year-end operating surplus in the amount of four hundred and three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four be allocated to repaving one point nine kilometers of first line, we have a mover and a second for that, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, so that's defeated. Yep, we're now go through the recorded vote process?
Counselor Workman? Counselor Van Lewin? Counselor Fisher? Counselor Morris, yes? Counselor Kitchess?
Yes.
No. And so that, uh, ends that discussion, thanks very much to the delegation to come here, appreciate it. Um, moving on to, oh yeah, let's, so we have another, uh, recommendation here. Um, okay, so we have a recommendation that, from staff, that the Council of the Townships that I wanted to receive report, C O R two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-eight dated May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen for information. And that the two thousand and seventeen year-end operating surplus in the amount of four hundred and three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four be transferred to the general capital reserve. Move for that recommendation? Move for that recommendation? Counselor Van Lewin, second by, Counselor Fisher, all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to information items, um, so we have a capital project status report that was completed by, uh, Mr. Brady, you wanna speak to anything there, Mark?
Yeah, there's, there's not really, uh, much to add, it's, uh, just standard format I've been using for years for this. Um, the numbers are as of December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. The comments as to the status of the project are up to about two or three weeks ago.
Okay. Questions from council on that report? It's just for information. Okay, um, then we have the treasurer's annual statement, development charge reserve funds. Um, that has been completed by our treasurer, Dan, did you have anything to add to that?
Uh, yes, just a few, uh, minor comments. So, uh, we had our development charge public meeting earlier this afternoon. Um, Gary did indicate that there are annual reporting requirements by the treasurer. Um, this is the report he was referring to, where we have to show the annual activity within the development charge reserve funds for each fiscal year. Um, so it's, it's basically a report showing all the inflows and outflows from the DC reserve fund for calendar year two thousand and seventeen.
Any questions from council on that report? So, for information as well? Okay, we have, uh, the third information report, we have minutes from the Tender War Committee meeting dated March tw- twelfth and fifth. Any questions from that council on that one? There's two meetings there. We have minutes from the Economic Development Task Force, uh, from March first, two thousand and eighteen. And we have minutes from the Heritage Center Wynton Advisory Committee meetings from March sixth and March twelfth. Then we have the, uh, council committed the whole tracking list, any, any questions on any of those items? Counselor Kitchess?
Uh, it has no date stated for the council growth and governance, and I was just wondering when that was gonna happen within this council.
So the council remuneration is coming to the May twenty-eighth meeting, is it, Jerry? Yeah.
Is that what that is, council growth and governance?
That's my understanding, it was the last piece, we still have that?
That's what?
Counselor Morris?
So, next Monday, they're coming with a report on our remuneration? Are they gonna talk to us? They haven't been approached at all.
Council set up on a advisory committee and they've gone through the process.
But they're not gonna talk to the individual councils?
Maybe that's part of the terms of reference for the, the work that we drive through.
I'm sorry, what?
It, the terms, I'd have to go back to terms of reference, but I don't believe that, uh, council-approved terms of reference spoke to individually meeting with the council.
Uh, is it in there or is it?
I don't believe it was.
Oh, okay, that's fine, just wondering.
Well, they did do a comparison of other municipalities, uh, and council did appoint, uh, the advisory members at a meeting back in February, I think?
Counselor Kitchess?
Well, Sandra is, uh, working to get that out to council in next week or two, and so that'll be going through that process, and then we will look at the time we can bring that back to council. No, she's gonna be looking at setting out dates, and then depending on the availability of council, we'll have to see when that, we can get it back to council.
Anything else on that? Okay. Um, and the last thing, motion to adjourn? Counselor Kitchess, second by? Oh, you have a question on?
No, I just heard when I make it was a statement, I do apologize about the statement, about swallowed by the machine, wrong choice of words.
Sorry, I just felt like we were the Borg or something. Um, seconded by, uh, Counselor Workman, all in favor? And we're adjourned.